To get started, we'll start with a pool by Commissioner Marfil.
Aloha, hanoi Kako. Epele Kako. Eke'oko amanalo e loko kalanie vahile o mahalo ke ia nonamea pavo punio Kako. Ke olu-olu maee e ho maika ike ka ikaika ka na'oa o pili ikiya oi hana, pili ikiya papa hana. Oke'ia kaleo mahalo me kaleo ha'a'a'a'a'a'mene.
Okay, before calling today's meeting to order, we'd like to welcome two new members to the commissioner, uh, commission, uh, representing the island of Maui. Commissioner Archie Kalepa as of June 30th, 20, or two, June 30th, 2028. I'd also like to introduce, uh, the commissioner representing the island of Molokai, Commissioner Lawrence Lasua. His term goes to June 30th, 2028 also. Uh, I'd ask them to stand and raise your right hand. Okay, uh, aye, state your name.
Aye, I am from a pool manakila o te kola kei lasua.
Okay. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the constitution of the state of Hawaii.
The constitution of the state of Hawaii.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties as a member of the Hawaiian Homes Commission.
My duties as a member of the Hawaiian Homes Commission.
For the state of Hawaii to the best of my ability.
The state of Hawaii to the best of my ability.
Uh, what I'd like to also have you do is introduce yourselves. We'll start with Archie. Kind of explain yourself about what you are.
Aloha, everyone. Thank you for coming. Um, my name is Archie Kalepa. I live in Lahaina, in Leali'i. You know, first off, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. And I hope that I can serve our people, Hawaiian people, to the best of my ability by making sure I'm mak'ala, I listen, um, and pay attention to the needs of our people and, uh, support the chair and the direction of this commission, the benefit of our people. So I just want to say aloha. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Lawrence Lasua. I'm from Molokai. I live on a homestead lot. That's lot number two of the 49 people who helped start the Hawaiian Homes during the 1920s. My grandfather was one of the first ones. And, uh, I'm, I'm I'm trying to think of the department as a way of helping our beneficiaries, which is what the whole thing I've started for. So I'm hoping me being here will do that. And, uh, I look forward to the challenges that comes forth, even though I'll have a hard time trying to understand a lot of these, uh, legalities or legal words that they have in here or, and hopefully they'll be able to help me, uh, and be, be good for the beneficiaries, to help them as much as I can. Thank you.
You know, this is, uh, oftentimes thankless job. It takes a lot of time and effort and, uh, really appreciate you guys stepping up and, uh, representing our beneficiaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
The meeting of the Hawaiian Homes Commission is called to order. The meeting is being held live and in person at Halepouli, DHHL Kapolei office, 91-5420, Kapolei Parkway, Oahu, and virtually via Zoom. I'm Colley Watson, Chairman of the Hawaiian Homes Commission, and today's date is Monday, July 15, 2024. The time is 9:38. Will you please call the rope?
Commissioner Freitas, Commissioner Kalekini.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. He's online. He's joining us from Zoom. Did you say aye?
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Kalepa.
Aye.
Commissioner Koneakua.
Aye.
Commissioner Lasua.
Aye.
Commissioner Marfil.
Eo.
Commissioner Namu'ol.
Ee.
Commissioner Nevis.
Aye.
Chair Watson.
Aye.
Nine members present. We have a quorum.
Okay, before I entertain a motion to approve the agenda, I will call on Juan Garcia to offer an amendment for items D2 and D3.
Good morning, commissioners. And, um, first of all, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Kalepa as well as Lasua. Welcome aboard. Looking forward to working with both of you. Um, secondly, I apologize for having to have the commission do this extra step. Um, again, for the record, I apologize. Juan Garcia, Homestead Services Division Administrator. Um, due to my oversight, the agenda needs to be amended, uh, to include certain lessees, uh, information on item D2 and D3. Um, I think Leah has a screen, uh, that she can, or a list of these, um, lessees along with the lease number and area that needs to be added to the agenda's, uh, exhibit listing. And if I humbly request the commission approve the amendment of the agenda to include the individuals that's listed on the, um, screen to be added to the agenda listing.
Okay, is there a motion to amend?
Nevis.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are we going to be provided that copy that?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, this is consent to mortgages. Okay, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, commissioners. Just to clarify, it was just missing on the agenda listing. These names are included in the respective submittals. Thank you.
I just leave that. I'll say the rest. Okay, let's see. Let's, I guess, approve of the amended agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, tonight, yeah, tonight's, uh, DHHL community meeting will be at Stevenson Middle School Cafeteria at 6:30 PM. Are there any edits or amendments to the June 13, 2024 budget workshop minutes or the June 17 and 18, 2024 meeting minutes?
Um, Chair, I just wanted to note for the record on June 17 and 18, um, there is a correction to the voting results on page 16. The vote was not unanimous. There was one no vote. So, um, if you approve, it would be as amended.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as proposed amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, we're gonna now take, uh, public testimony agenda items, uh, items, excuse me. You can either testify now or you can wait till the item is, uh, presented. It's your choice. Uh, the first person listed, Patty Kahanamoku Teruia.
Aloha, Kako. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for this opportunity, commissioners. Thank you. Um, congratulations to our new commissioners on board. Uh, Mr. Kalepa, aloha. Part of my ohana with, uh, with my family on the Hokulea, aloha, and also our Commissioner Molokai. So my name is Patty Kahanamoku Teruia, and I'm here on, um, item, agenda's item C3. And, um, I'm speaking on behalf of our Neighborhood Security Watch, Kealana, in Nanakuli. And I am in support. Um, it is for your information only at the end of the agenda under Office of Chairman on the status on DHHL. And it's just a comment, and I wanted to comment this for the record, that, um, during their pilot program as an enforcement team started, um, and my comment is they've done such a wonderful job in the community. The community engagement that they, um, showcased in our communities as a beneficiary myself, but in our Aho'pu'aha has been outstanding. Um, they have come out to many community forums, town meetings, and to express their care of the community and to, um, educate and to speak to beneficiaries about enforcement and how we can form our neighborhood security watches. You know, as we all know, we have problems in our, in our, um, uh, what you call homesteads. And it's usually up to us as beneficiaries to stand up and, you know, form neighborhood security watches. But the, the connections that we have and they produce now is that, um, they're open, they're transparent. You can reach them. They send this emails out to all homesteaders if you want to get involved. And you can comment should you have a problem, um, what, what they can do to come out to your Aho'pu'aha in your homestead to help see what's going on, whether you have a drug home, whether you have, um, you know, people that are parking illegally or anything like that. So, um, you know, Kealana is one of the oldest homesteads in Nanakuli, and we have had our numerous problems, but it is getting better because of the communication of the pilot program. And, um, you know, I know it's only in Oahu. I support it, you know, uh, moving forward to other islands and they will have the opportunity to work with our enforcement team. Um, so I just wanted to comment that. And, um, another comment, um, on behalf of our homestead, uh, Kealana is that, um, Mr. Chair, we're, we also, um, been having town meetings, and this town meeting is held, um, it's called Hope Awareness, and it's, we're fortunate to have this in Nanakuli Village Center. And so we would really like to have the enforcement team to come and be a part of it. We're having Prosecutor Allen, we're having Major Lambert, who continue to comes out to our community and, um, help us with our neighborhood security watches team. We're very, we're getting very strong and bold with our neighborhood watch team, with Pastor Allen and other teams in Kapolei. Um, this past weekend, we had an event in Kapolei, Kanahili. So must some of our teams go out to support, um, other communities, and this is what it's about. So I just wanted to thank, uh, the department and thank the enforcement team and thank the commission and to give them a great opportunity to support this. And, um, they're doing such a great job in the community engagement, um, that is moving forward. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we can have our enforcement team stand up and be, uh, recognized. Yeah, next testifier, Jojo Tanimoro. Uh, would you like to testify now or wait till the agenda item comes up? Jojo?
I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, so, I, I don't want to be on camera. It throws me off. Okay, so, yeah. Okay, so anyway, um, I'd like to testify now, and if there's a question after the, the, you know, presentation, then I'll raise my hand again. But I want to thank this, uh, permission for allowing me the opportunity to request that this, uh, G1 item on the Kauai High Regional Plan be postponed because, number one, we don't, I don't think the community at large is aware of this regional plan. This one that was, is for presentation today. In fact, I got a notice this morning from some in the community, about 25 people say they support it on the basis of working the water subsidy. But that is not the plan. Okay, so, uh, everybody, I think that I have spoken to in my community wants this water subsidy that was presented to the commission last month. But the Kauai High Plan is also, uh, erred in a lot of information that's in it. And so I, I would like to ask that the commissioners postpone this meeting. Uh, I submitted a testimony last week, I think about Thursday or Friday, based on the presentation that we got back in February. And so the new plan didn't become available to me until Saturday. So since Saturday, now everybody is talking about, or the commissioners are gonna approve this plan, but the community hasn't read it yet, you know? So I think it's a little bit too fast for the community, and I think that's one of the reasons. There's some things in here that I have a problem with, and I've, I've written this and I've emailed it to you, but of course, too late for this meeting. And that would be, we have been asking for the water subsidy. And there's also another request for the Lalamilo 10 million gallon water access to Kauai High. Apparently, according to the local newspaper, this water that Hawaiian Homes started with about two or three years ago is coming to Kauai High, but for the commercial, uh, area. It has nothing to do with the beneficiaries, and this community needs potable water or even agricultural water. And we've been trying to get that, but we don't get a response. And so we don't, I don't know if we're gonna get any of that water. I was told no a couple of years ago, maybe last year. And I think that's kind of wrong because Kauai High has a problem with acquiring water. So that's the second request that I made in this plan, but it's not there. The other one is the community has been asking for access to an emergency road above the Kailapa subdivision. For the last couple of years, we have not got, gotten that opportunity. Gone around to all the departments. Nobody is answering us, but we need an emergency road out of here. And it's in the, the plan from before, and the plan before, in fact, it's even in a master plan way back in 1989, 90. Oh, sorry. Okay, well, anyway, it's written. And if anybody has a question, but I really want to let you know that I was aware that the community is supporting the water subsidy, but it's not part of the plan. The plan is what matters. And there's information that's wrong, and it needs to be corrected. And I have a shortness. But anyway, thank you. I guess I gotta talk to you after the presentation. I guess I gotta talk to you after the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jojo. Okay, the first item on the agenda, the consent agenda, Juan Garcia.
Once again, good morning, Commissioners. Again, for the record, Juan Garcia, Homestead Services Division Administrator. And under the consent agenda, we have eight items for your consideration, namely D2, D3, D4, D5, D6, D7, D8, and finally, D9. I do wanna highlight D7, Approval of Assignment of Lease Hold Interest, which includes the transaction involving Francis Palama. And, hold on, apologize. Francis Palama and Lawrence Howell, the transferee. If you recall, the two parties came before the Commission last month requesting for this transaction to be approved by this Commission. And we are here today to include that in item D7.
What item is that in D7?
D7, I'm sorry. Page 11, number 29, top of page 11. Francis Palama, less C, transferee is Lawrence Howell. Lease number 5666.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome, Commissioner.
Okay, can I have a motion, and then we'll have a discussion, and then any witness that wants to testify? Is there a second? Okay, discussion. Commissioner? Okay, Mike, Mike Elakini.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. First off, sorry I'm not there. Welcome to our two new Commissioners. Welcome aboard.
Did you get a haircut, man?
That's why I'm not there. I did, I did. But a quick question, Juan, on item D4. There's like several pages of folks deceased. Is that, is that like all those beneficiaries there on the witness, and they passed away in 2023?
You're absolutely correct, Commissioner. These are individual applicants that did not name or do not have an effective designation of successor. We went through the public notice process, and no qualified relatives came forth claiming that application. So we're coming before the Commission requesting that respective application be canceled because there's no qualified successor to the application.
Yeah, no, there are quite a few. I just wanted to confirm that with you. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Juan.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, the next item, agenda, approval petition for declaratory ruling to determine the enforceability of the settlement and mutual lease and indemnity agreement between DHHL Bruce Parker as the personal representative of the state of Pearl Parker, and less C, Thalia White Ching, the decedent, and the stipulated order regarding irrevocable designation of Bruce Parker as a successor, lease number 2877. Richard Hope?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Richard Hope. I'm the Executive Assistant to the Chair. Present with me today is Lisa Parker, who sits in the capacity as the personal representative of her husband's estate, Bruce Parker. Now, this case involves litigation that resulted in a settlement. And the estate of Bruce Parker, as represented by his wife, is asking that this Commission give valid effect to the settlement and put into effect the intent of the parties to that settlement agreement. Given some context to this, this case involves residential lease number 2878. The original less C of that lease was John Parker, who is the patriarch of the Parker family on this particular lease. He got this lease in 1952, 1954. And he held this lease until, he and his wife Pearl Parker held this lease, and until he conveyed his interest to his wife back in March 20, 1985. And subsequently, he died six months later. But when he died, his wife had taken all of lease 2878. Now, Pearl Parker had the lease until 2020, when she was adjudicated to be incapacitated. A care worker took her to court, and the court found that she was, she lacked capacity. She couldn't take care of herself. So they appointed three guardians of her and her property, of her, actually. And one of the guardians was Thalia Ching. Several months after being appointed the caretaker, Thalia Ching had Mrs. Parker sign a designation of successor, designating her, Thalia Ching, as the successor, and also have her transfer the lease into her and Pearl Parker's name. So it became a joint lease. Several months later, Thalia Ching had Pearl convey the lease totally to Thalia Ching. Thalia Ching, when Pearl died, and on August 5, 2004, Pearl Parker's son, Bruce Parker, filed a lawsuit trying to set aside the conveniences to Thalia Ching as fraudulently obtained because his mother lacked capacity, as was determined by the court. The court, on the eve of trial, a settlement was reached between the estate of Pearl Parker, represented by her son, and Thalia Ching. The settlement agreement, in pertinent part, is set forth in Exhibit 2. And pretty much what it says is that Thalia Ching would designate Bruce Parker as the successor to lease number 2877, or designate any other person that Bruce Parker or his estate names as a successor in the event Bruce Parker is unable to be designated as successor to the lease. It also set forth that Thalia Ching would retain the right to remain the less C on the property for the remainder of her life. So pretty much what happened was the court, the parties agreed, and the court sanctioned. Thalia Ching would remain on the property for life. But thereafter, but she had to designate Bruce Parker as the successor. And if for some reason he could not take, then his estate would name his successor. And that was the state of the events. And that was stated in their settlement agreement, as well as the stipulated order. Now...
Who are the parties to the litigation?
The parties to the litigation was Bruce Parker individually, and the estate of Pearl Parker, and the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, and Thalia Ching. Now...
So this lease involves, actually, Bruce Parker's dad, who was the original recipient of this lease?
Yes. So, since his death, Bruce Parker's death, the estate of Bruce Parker, which is Thalia Ching, I mean, which is Lisa Parker, she became the representative of Bruce Parker's estate pursuant to a will that was signed by her husband. So she is the representative of the Bruce Parker estate. And she comes here today asking the Commission to validate the two agreements. The settlement agreement, as well as the stipulation and order, and that the Commission should honor the agreement made and allow the estate of Bruce Parker to name the successor to their father's lease. And pretty much, that's the gist of it.
Any questions by the Commissioners? Commissioner Nevis?
So I guess, I guess my question is, is Bruce Parker was designated a successor, is that correct?
Yes.
And then Bruce Parker died.
Passed away.
Passed away.
Now, when Bruce Parker passed away, position taken by the Department is that he could not designate to a future person because as a, as a designee and not a less C, he could not designate.
Correct.
So the Department felt, his position is that, well, they won't be following the settlement agreement and the court's order, that the estate of Bruce Parker, based on these circumstances, because it was initial fraudulent convenance, that the reason why we have this settlement is that they wanted to rectify the wrong and return the property back to the original less C, which would be the Parker estate. But since Bruce Parker died, based on the settlement agreement, the estate, his estate, would name the successor. Now, you also have in your exhibits emails between the Attorney for the Department of Hawaiian Homelands and Bruce Parker, where they specifically mention this particular dilemma that was, that was ongoing soon after Mrs. Parker's death.
Excuse me, Richard, is that what was dropped on us this morning?
Yes, yes. Sorry for that, but the Attorney for Bruce Parker is Dennis O'Connor. This thing occurred a long time ago.
Yeah.
And so we've been trying to find records for this particular case. And initially, we're told that his records have been published because it's such an old case. But this Friday, he called and said, we found some emails linking that. And he sent emails that might shed some light on the discussion that was going on between him and the Deputy Attorney General for the Hawaiian Homes. And if you look at these emails, what it says in there is that Dennis O'Connor is telling the Attorney General the dilemma that is being faced by Bruce Parker. That he was having problems with the Department, I guess, accepting the settlement agreement. But in email number two, if you look at it...
Excuse me, Richard, can you speak closer to the mic, please? You kind of break him up online a little bit.
Okay, thank you. I think if you review the emails that were, and I'm sorry, Mike, you probably don't have it because you're not here. But, yeah, if you review the emails, particularly the emails between the Attorney General, Deputy Attorney General, and the Attorney for Bruce Parker, it would, it reflects what was going on at the time. For example, in this particular case, the first letter is from Dennis O'Connor to the AGs, and he writes in pertinent part, email number one. "The intent was to have the order recorded, so all would have noticed of the same." Karen Lucero, the person who also told Bruce he needed to approve that he was 50% Hawaiian, the successor designee to the DHHL files, although the DHHL files already had this information, told Bruce that the order will have to be approved by the Commission. "I would like an explanation why the DHHL Commission needs to approve a private settlement that you were involved in. I would appreciate if you would straighten this out. I am beginning to have a full understanding of the frustration of lesses with the Department. Honestly, thought you were representing the DHHL in this matter, regards, Dennis Jr." The AG responds, "Dennis, I spoke with the Homestead Services Supervisors at DHHL. He tells me that they are aware of the settlement agreement. In fact, per my instructions, a copy was put in the less C file some time ago. Apparently, Bruce misunderstood. The settlement agreement does not need Commission approval. It is now in the less C's file, and DHHL will comply. However, his designation form as a successor has been approved, but that is a document going to the Commission for ratification." A few months later, Dennis O'Connor writes to the Attorney General, and he says, "As you know, Mrs. White has designated Mr. Parker as the irrevocable designee for the Papakolea lease. Ms. White holds the lease for life." And then he will go to Mr. Parker. "There is concern that if he predeceases Mrs. White, that the entire situation will repeat itself again. The settlement clearly indicated that Mr. Parker was to name whomever would have would take over from Thalia White. Attached is the designation of Bruce Parker as the permanent successor designated of this position to his children, both primary and alternative. Both children meet the blood quantum to take the lease outright. The children are 68% Hawaiian." So in this particular letter, it reflects the problems that, and the concern that the Parkers had, and the discussions between the two attorneys. So in this motion brought by Lisa Parker, she's asking the Commission to look at all the history in this particular case, review the settlement agreement between Thalia Ching and the Parkers, review the stipulation order signed by the Department's attorneys, and the communications that were contemporaneous with the signing, and find that the, and give validity to the settlement agreement and put into effect its terms and conditions, which would allow the estate of Bruce Parker to name the next successor, which, for the record, would be his son, Kamuela.
Commissioner Nevis?
So, so, Richard, where I read the settlement agreement, and this is what I've had in the documents, and hopefully that hasn't changed, is it says, "Release, less C agrees to immediately designate Bruce Parker, Bruce K. Parker, as the successor lease 2877, or other known person that Bruce Parker or his estate names in the event that Bruce Parker is unable to be designated successor." So he's designated successor. He passes away. He doesn't have any rights to that lease at that point. The only person that has rights to that lease is Thalia. Is the Ms. Ching. Unfortunately, he's not a less C. He's only a successor. The successor passes away. And I'd like to have, if I could have Juan Garcia, the Administrator, come to the table, because he's the Department head that's been doing this for 30 years, and he can explain the process for us, please.
No, I understand, I understand the situation. But, but what we have to understand is that the less C in this case, Thalia Ching, surrendered, pretty much surrendered her lease in the settlement agreement. And the reason why she did it was because she was on the eve of going to trial with the allegation that she got her position as less C fraudulently. Okay, so take a step back, Commissioner. If this case went to trial, and if the result of the verdict was that this was a fraudulent convenance, therefore, the convenance putting Thalia Ching as a less C will be set aside, then Thalia Ching would not be a less C. Rather than going to trial and finding that, having that conclusion because it was clear that, in fact, a court had declared Mrs. Parker incapacitated. She cannot do it. So it was a foregone conclusion that she would have been found incapacitated. So it was a foregone conclusion that she would have been found incapacitated and this conveyance would not go through. If that was the case, then Thalia Ching would have been terminated right there. She would have no rights at all. But having an attorney to work something out where she became, she was allowed to be there for life. We call her a lessie because the department on its files calls her a lessie. But, but when you look at the facts and you apply the situation, what Thalia Ching was, was had a life estate. She did not have full rights of a lessie. Because the full rights of a lessie would have the ability to convey. She did not have all the bundle of rights. What she had was a life estate. Upon her death, she wasn't a lessie anymore. She was, her life estate terminated. So understand what you're saying, that she's the lessie, therefore she's the only one that can designate. I would point out, if that is the interpretation, what the end result would be, that no one in the Parker line could take, could take 2878. Because the line then, what, what the department would be recognizing would be Thalia Ching's line. The line, the line that came to, in that position based on a fraudulent act.
Yeah. So you say, you say that this is a life estate. That might be the life, that may be a term. But the problem is that the way this agreement was written, she was responsible for making the payments. She was, she was limited to being able to have a boarder or renter. She is the lessie. She's the lessie of record. She paid for that lease throughout her time. Not just, it's, it just says that she can be there for the lifetime. You may term it as a lifetime agreement. But she is the lessie of record. She makes the payments. She's responsible for the upkeep, insurance of that entire property.
She's the lessie of record with an asterisk.
Again, I'd like to have the department come to the table and explain the process on successorship.
I have no problems with that.
Chair?
Yeah. Juan. Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Juan Garcia, Homestead Services Division Administrator. Commissioner Nevis, your understanding of the process is the understanding that the department has, the very same. The settlement agreement called for Thalia Ching to designate Bruce Parker as her successor to the lease, whereby the lease interest, the leasehold interest will vest onto Bruce Parker upon her death. Unfortunately, Bruce predeceased Thalia. So whatever interests Bruce held as a successor, terminated upon his death. I just wanted to respond to the interest of Thalia Ching as a lessie. In our, in the department's position, she did not hold a life interest. Rather, she was the lessie. And she would remain the lessie until her death. If in fact, the intent of the settlement was to have Bruce hold the lease, my question is, why did, why did the complainant, Bruce Kepler, at the time, demand that the transfer of the lease be completed from Thalia to Bruce Parker at the time, rather than naming him as successor, which would assure him possession of the lease if the lease was in fact transferred? Unfortunately, that did not happen. I wasn't there, we don't know what happened. But the fulfillment of the condition of the order was done by Thalia when she was required to designate Bruce Parker as successor. She did that. That was, that was done. And again, I just want to apologize to the family of Bruce Parker. But that's basically, again, following the Act, Section 209, as well as Admin Rule 10363, which requires the department, again, the department shall publish a notice, basically what 10363, if a lessie fails to have an effective lease. And in this case, that was, that's what happened when Bruce Parker predeceased the lessie.
So Juan, I just have a question. Thalia Ching, or Mrs. Ching, is she still alive?
She passed away in 2019.
So, so have we put that out for public notice?
We have not done so yet.
Have, you know, the amount of time you've spent here, you've been here, what, 30 plus years handling these kind of, these kind of issues on successorship? Have you ever run into this kind of an issue before?
We have, and we've always followed the Act and the rules. If there's no effective designation that was filed, again, the department follows 10363 and proceeds with the public notice, calling qualified relatives of the lessie to come forth and submit their successorship claim to the lease.
And normally, these types of issues come to the commission for a contested case? Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
These types of issues, if there's an issue, it comes to the commission for a contested case?
The petitioner can petition for the commission to schedule a contested case hearing, yes?
Juan, let me ask you something. You know, and I appreciate all your time you've been here, and you know, you understand all the rules and I guess the process with respect to the department's process. But with respect to litigation, do you have any experience in that?
I have no experience. I'm not a lawyer, I don't profess to be one.
Okay. But have we had cases where litigation was involved, where the department actually acknowledged, enforced what the court's rules? Based on your experience?
In my experience, I have, I don't recall any situation where the court stepped in and ordered this commission to.
You don't have any experience?
No, I don't have any experience. The only experience I do have is by way of the bankruptcy court, where the bankruptcy court ordered the lessie to transfer.
So the litigation, it probably deferred to legal counsel, attorney general's office. Would that be a correct statement?
That's correct.
And in this particular case, a deputy AG was involved in the process and reached an agreement with the parties, which included the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Is that correct?
That is correct. Lee Crowell represented the department. And again, in my reading of the agreement, the agreement condition of designating Bruce Parker.
Right. And if he wasn't capable, then the state would take on that burden of designating. In this case, we're talking about a lease that originated with the father of Bruce Kepler, or Bruce Parker, excuse me. And as a result of a sister who was tasked with caring for that individual, rather than caring for that individual, transferred the lease to herself. Isn't that the scenario we have?
That's my understanding of the facts of the case.
And the court was in the process of going into litigation to basically find whether there was fraud upon the conveyance. And a result of that, all the parties agreed that Bruce Parker or his heir should get the lease, not the line or the defrauder. So, you know, you look at the equity as well as what the department, as well as Bruce's wife is trying to do, is set the record straight, as well as avoid the situation where a person had defrauded her own sister from getting the lease. Isn't that what, the scenario we have here?
Yeah, and that's exactly why I questioned why the court, or why Bruce Parker did not demand that that lease be transferred.
Well, he died, but it was also a settlement agreement that acknowledged that situation, where if he should die, his estate could name the successor. Isn't that correct?
Again, I'll read from the alleged settlement agreement, page three, paragraph A, which reads, "Release C, which is Thalia Ching, agrees to immediately designate Bruce Parker as the successor to lease number 2877, or any other person that Bruce Parker or his estate names." And listen, "In the event Bruce Parker is unable to be designated as successor to the lease for any reason."
Right.
So he was designated, so that condition was met.
Okay, so we have a situation where we really, I guess, with respect to the commission, there's different ways we're going to approach it. You can ask for more information. We can request, we can request that a hearing be had, or we could make a decision, or we could defer it. What's the situation with that lease right now? Who's in the house? Is it abandoned, just sitting there?
You know what, I apologize, I don't have that information currently.
Do we have a situation where there's a grandson that, no, I don't want to disparage the guy, but isn't there some concerns?
That's what I heard. There's a grandson living there. But it's boarded up.
It's boarded up?
Yeah.
So we kind of have a very, I guess, a situation where we need to take action rather than having it sit, deteriorate, and, you know. Any other questions? Commissioner? Commissioner Kalikini?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just want to chime in. I mean, this, this is not a simple, easy situation. There's a lot of information, a lot of legal information. And, you know, I'm used to something like this going before a hearings officer to determine the findings, you know, facts and conclusions, and come to the commission with recommendations. Even the recommended motion and action on this, you know, one, two, and three, it says for the commission to consider the petition. Yeah, that takes time. I don't know if one week or however long we had this information is enough to really get a good, a better understanding to make, you know, good decision. Settlement agreement also, that's pretty involved. So, you know, you mentioned a couple of options. I, my, I would support this going to a hearings officer. Because typically, when we come before the commission for taking action, either the department has a recommendation, or you have something from a hearings officer. That's my input.
Any other questions? Chair?
I have another.
Commissioner Nevis?
Yes, I just have another question. Richard, when was the settlement agreement reached? What date, do you remember?
If you look at seat two, the settlement agreement is signed and greeted. September 10th, September 17th. September 17th. 2007.
2007. So, so in regards to your, where you referred to this, I'm sorry. In terms of you're referring to this email about a designation of successor, which adds other, other items on there. This email's dated 2008.
It's true.
That's after the settlement agreement.
That's after the settlement agreement. And if you read the emails, what the Parkers are trying to do was designate Kamuela at that point in time. Because as background information, Bruce Parker had a hard congenital condition. So basically, he wants to put his children in place and designate his children. And that's the reason why he submitted, if you look at the emails, a designation form that he sent to the department's attorney, to the attorney general, saying, "This is who we want designated." Okay, so it went to the attorney general. They were in the process, we don't know where it went.
And this was after the agreement?
Oh, yeah. They were putting it to effect. What this shows is that the department's own attorney was on the same page as what the estate is saying, is that if Bruce should pass, then his estate would designate who would take. And that's the department's own attorney.
I understand.
Okay, so there's this understanding. Now we move forward 15 years to this point, and the existing people said, "No, we don't look at that because Thalia Ching is the lessie. Bruce Parker, when he maked, he maked whatever rights he had, maked with him."
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're going out to publication. And if you look ahead, Bruce Parker is out, is out of the game. Bruce Parker's line gets nothing. So this commission under 209 has great discretion to look at everything and find out what is right and to make the decision. All it has to say is, we give validity to these agreements that was entered into by the parties, including the department. And the department, as a matter of a stopple, should not be able to go back in the position they had previously taken.
Okay, understood. Chair, could we ask the AG to opine on this, whether it's a valid, you know, settlement agreement? Whether it's a valid agreement?
So there are, there are a lot of legal issues here that I think could be discussed. I will suggest to the commission that in order to preserve attorney-client privilege, that the commission go into executive session to discuss those legal issues.
Yeah, I have to agree with that. If there is litigation against the department, if we don't honor this settlement agreement, we will get sued. So with that risk, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Chair, could I say, are we still allowed to have public comment on this issue?
At this point, yeah.
Do we have any public comment on this issue before we go into executive session?
We can. Did you like to make a public comment?
No, I'm saying, is there anyone else out there who wants to make public comment before you go in?
Okay. Blossom Fictara?
She's keeping the seat warm for you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chair, welcome. Ashi? First meeting, going to be gangbusters. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on item C1. Well, I see that the department is requesting an approval of the petition. I would actually ask the commission to defer that decision. I also see it's listed on your agenda for executive session discussion. You know, the concern that it brings to me as a beneficiary is, I get the whole scenario. And at the end of the day, we do want to make the beneficiary whole, in whatever way we can. But at the same time, I would like the commission to entertain the notion that when you are charged with making these kinds of decisions, you have the, right now, what it's reading, what I read into this thing is that this court order is undermining the authority of the commission by compelling you to make this decision. Okay? It concerns me a lot. Because if court decisions like this can compel our commissioner, commission, to change their position, to impact their fiduciary duties, who's to say that nobody else can? Like Juan, I have been witness to beneficiaries coming to the commission, making these kinds of requests of commissioners. And I ask you, go into executive session, defer the decision on this, have a very robust conversation. Because what you decide to do, in this particular case, will have an impact on every decision that goes forward in the future for us. Mahalo.
Okay, Homalani Shaddell?
Hello, and good morning, Commissioners. I'm Homalani Shaddell, beneficiary here in Kapale. And I really didn't intend to say anything. But for those of you who have known me, come before you before, you know that. you know that my kuliana that was given to me is to protect the trust, and that is what I'm here to say this morning. And I... What Blossom shared is exactly the way I feel, that you need to go into executive session, but also remember that your first and foremost kuliana is to our Hawaiian Homes Commission's Act. And often, because I've sat in that chair many years, and I've heard the same story, and what I do not want to happen is that you set another precedence. So please be very cautious about the decision that you're going to make on this. This is nothing personal. I do not know his family, but what I do know is that there are 28,000 people on the waitlist, and there are many others who have gone through this process before. And this department has been sued many times, and we shouldn't have to be. And so just please remember, your fiduciary duty is to the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act and to protect our trust and to protect our people, our beneficiaries. Mahalo.
Thank you. Patrick Avayola?
Hello, Mai Kaku.
Hello.
Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to weigh in on this subject matter. With due respect to, I too would echo the sentiments of the two previous speakers based on the fact that the responsibility of the Department of Hawaiian Homes, or excuse me, not the department, to the commission and the state of Hawaii has is to its beneficiaries, to the beneficiaries, and then to the trust. And that was just said recently in the Kasten Gedi case, in the Nelson case, so that should be clearly set up. However, with due respect to Mr. Hoax's representation of something that happened 16 years ago, I would remind the commission, when you go into executive session, to clearly, there's a section in the Hawaiian Home Commission Act that clearly states, section 206 clearly states that the powers and duties of the governor and the state of Hawaii is restricted. So please do not go in and try to think that you're going to have to circumvent the powers of the commission over that of the state court. I'm sorry, it reaches to a point where people got to go to the court to resolve matters, but unfortunately, Hawaiian Homes and its trust do not subjugate themselves to the whims of the court. If you do it correctly, if staff did something correctly 16 years ago, we wouldn't be in this position now. So I just want to make it clear. 206 restricts it. I would want you guys, if you want to go into executive session, that's your prerogative. But when you go into executive session, clearly, you need to look at the restrictions that are put on you as commissioners and the state to section 206. Thank you very much for allowing me the time.
Thank you. Jermaine Myers?
Mahalo, Chair. I also echo the last three beneficiaries' testimony. I too as well was not going to testify. Unfortunately, when I heard Richard Hoax's admonition of wanting to make a decision today, I felt that I needed to speak up and protect the trust as Auntie had stated earlier. I'd like to also say that when you go into executive session, I hope that you will come out with a decision to either defer or do, as Commissioner Mike Kalakini had suggested. Mahalo, Keokua.
Thank you. Puni?
Aloha, Commissioners. Aloha.
Hello.
So Auntie Pearl, I was president of Papukulea Community Association, and that woman is my aunt. And I am testifying on behalf of the Parker Ohana. This whole situation didn't have to go like this. It was not necessary at all. Our Auntie was incapacitated to make the decision. I mean, it hurts me because she was not of sound mind to make that transfer. I'm sorry. We knew that assignment went to Bruce. We all knew. She talked to me at length about it when she was of sound mind. What continues to happen at the department, and I'm going to say this, we're not checking state of mind when these kupuna come in and make changes to that lease. They're being tricked. And Auntie Pearl, bless her heart, I love her, but Auntie Thalia too, she meant, well, she was taking care of Auntie, but that lease belonged to Bruce and the Parker Ohana. So I just want to say, I'm supporting Lisa. Papukulea Association, while I was there, I knew exactly what was going on, and unfortunately, it went awry. And those of us in Papukulea that know the Parkers, that house, the roof is falling down, Kalakini. You cannot live in that house. The house is down. So we need to, you know, that's another house that's abandoned in Papukulea. So please, you know, I know, I hear everyone's manao. As a Hawaiian Home said leader back in that day when Auntie was there and well, that's my Auntie. And I want to, you know, send my aloha to Lisa and advocate on her behalf, on behalf of my cousin, on behalf of Bruce. Thank you, everybody. Mahalo.
Thank you, Puni. You want to session this?
Good morning, Chairman Watson and Commissioner. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this morning. My name is Lisa Parker, and I am here on behalf of my deceased husband, Bruce K. Parker, the designated successor to lease number 2877, and to support regular agenda item C1. Lease number 2877, or rather, 2877 Tantlis Drive in Papukulea is not just a homestead property in prime downtown Honolulu. 2877 Tantlis Drive was the home of John Parker Senior and Pearl Kate Parker and their nine children. The Parker Ohana thrived on this property. John and Pearl raised their children at 2877 Tantlis Drive. It was their family home, their legacy, a place where their children, their families, and dear friends would gather for all the holidays each year and on special occasions, and Puni knows. The home, 2877 Tantlis Drive, brought the Ohana together. The neighborhood is unique. Every neighbor knew all of the Parker Ohana, the Barracruz Ohana across the street, the Rodriguez Ohana, the Kaukulea Ohana lived across the street as well. Auntie Jino Keave and her family were next-door neighbors to the Parker Ohana when they lived further up the road on Tantlis Drive along the steep hillside. My husband and his siblings went to school with all the neighborhood kids. My husband took on this kuliana for the right reason, to preserve a legacy for his beloved Ohana. He always strived to bring the Ohana together at every given moment. I can attest to this. Bruce and I worked together for 41 years. To preserve and to maintain, take care of, a once-in-a-lifetime entitlement was our mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Motion.
Second.
Okay, the commission will convene in an executive session pursuant to section 92-5A4HRS to consult with its attorneys on questions and issues pertaining to the commission's powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and liabilities.
The Commission is reconvening from its executive session. The Commission discussed its powers, duties and liabilities related to item C1, the Parker case. Okay, the Court would, or not the Court. The Commission would consider a motion by Commissioner Kalakini.
Yeah, so move, I'd like to move to a contest case hearing for this Parker situation.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Next item. We're gonna have a contest case hearing.
Good morning Commissioners. Juan Garcia, Homestead Services Division Administrator. D10 is to deny the request or transfer request of Matthew Mika to William Iona for agricultural lease number 6265, lot number 160-B in Panaeva, Hawaii for the remaining term of the lease.
Okay, you have got somebody want to testify? Oh, we got a couple. Okay, the first witness Ivan Louis Kwan and Mr. Iona and...
Well, my capital, Chair Watson, members of the Commission. My name is Ivan Louis Kwan. Mahalo Nui for allowing me to testify this morning. I support approval of the transfer of the lease to the potential LSC William T. Iona Sr. I present this test... Okay, mahalo. I present this testimony not as a lawyer but as an individual who has known the potential transferee, Tommy Iona, for approximately 65 years. I attended St. Joe's High School in Hilo with Tommy Iona and his siblings. Tommy and I also attended St. Morton's University in Olympia, Washington. I have observed Tommy's growth and development as a husband, a father, grandfather, police officer and now farmer with admiration and respect. I read admire and respect his work ethic, he works really hard, his honesty and he's a person of his word. In my written testimony, I made reference to the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act and I was pleased to hear as I've been sitting here how important it is to be guided by the principles of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. As I indicated in my written testimony, Section 101 lays out the purposes of the Act. Tommy epitomizes the beneficiary which the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act envisioned. He's one who embraces self-sufficiency, he's one who works hard to improve the quality of life for himself, his family and his community. Tommy is a person who fulfills his commitments and obligations. He's someone who the HHL would should be proud to have as a LSC. I noticed that the presence of Prince Kohio is here in back of the Chair Watson. In my written testimony, I made... In my written testimony, I made reference to the vision of Prince Kohio. Prince Kohio in his vision indicated that the only method in which to rehabilitate the race was to place them back upon the soil, quote, until school. We respectfully ask that the Commission enable Tommy and his Ohana to be placed, quote, "back upon the soil" to continue the farming operations. Mahalo Nui for allowing me to present this testimony.
Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Kamawi Iona?
Aloha, Mr. Chair. Thank you for this opportunity and the Commission. Good morning. I want to get a chair up here so my dad can sit next to me because I'm here to represent him. Thank you. So again, it's Kamawi Iona. I'm the middle of three sons of this man, Tommy Iona. I live in Hanamawi where I work as a firefighter for the Maui Colony. And I'm here to support my dad's request to transfer lot number 160-B Kahopea Street in Panaeva, Hawaii. I'd like to just share a little bit of background about our family, just to give you context of why Hawaiian Homes has been a big part of our family's upbringing and success. My parents raised us in the Puukapu Farm Lots in Waimea. There are the three sons. Kamaki is the oldest, myself, Kamawi, and then my younger brother, Kaniela. We all did well in school. We have a variety of degrees, bachelors and masters among us. Kamaki is a retired firefighter, paramedic from the county of Hawaii. He has three kids, all raised on Hawaiian homesteads in Waimea and currently live in Panaeva Homestead. I moved to Hanamawi where my wife is from. I also have three kids and two grandchildren. And Kaniela, the youngest, has two children. They live in Hilo where he's the head coach of the UH Hilo Vulcans basketball team. Hawaiian Homes has been a blessing for us. It's given us enriched experiences, taught us life lessons, and laid a solid foundation through toiling in the soil, planting and watering, windbreak by hand all those years ago, harvesting flowers and fruit, planting koa trees, setting up tent at the old Hawaiian Homes farmers market, helping my dad raise a bunch of animals over the years. I deeply have deeply embedded memories of killing and plucking chickens early in the morning as a young child, drinking milk that was thick like cream and kind of yellowish color from our cow bossi, and clipping hooves on the sheep just last month with my dad. So for the record, I say thank you, Dad, for all of that. And I also thank you, Hawaiian Homes, for making that possible. We are pulapula of that aina. My folks also made a big home there, room for each of their kids so we could always have a place to come home, a safety net to come back to. And we each have, whether it's for summer, summer break from college or as young adults trying to save up some money to buy our own aina and stand on our own two feet. They continue to do that to today. Right now, they have his granddaughter staying with them, saving up money for medical school where she'll be attending next fall. And this has been the legacy of aina ho'opula-pula for our Ohana. Our home in Puukapu, Waimea is the pu'uho'ua for us kids, the mo'opuna, and now the great-grandkids. And we are connected to that aina in a big way. Which brings us to this Panaeva lot. My folks are still farmers. They still grow fruit and flowers for sale. They raise sheep to feed the family. Farm income and homegrown subsistence has always been important to them and their well-being. My dad is pushing hard for this lot in Panaeva because of his connection to those places of his childhood, both Kiokaha and Panaeva. And I support that, and I hope that you can too. In the short term, we hope to expand the fruit and flower business, perhaps even bring the sheep over there if the aina finds it suitable and there's good feed there. Panaeva would allow for them to grow tropicals and add to their Waimea produce. But in the long term and big picture, my dad's pulapula, us, are making more pulapula. We're growing in numbers. Panaeva is where those generations will connect to aina by growing a farm with their parents and grandparents. If approved, I assure you that we'll make good use of that Kahopea lot. Mahalo for your patience and listening to our story. We came today because we don't know what the issue is, but we know there's an issue, this denial. And so on our end, we wanted to make sure that we represented ourselves and presented a full testimony. My dad, I think I signed him up as a testifier too. He told me just a little while ago, he not gonna say anything. He already submitted his paper. But we're here to find out why and if, why the denial and if there's something that we can, information we can provide, then that's what we're here for today. Thank you very much.
Any questions for this witness? There's another testifier, Charmaine Polk.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Charmaine Quillette Polk and I am a Realtor and I'm representing Mr. Mika. He inherited this property from his grandfather. And I sent everyone a copy of my letter and things that they've improved on the land, which wasn't much, but is something, in hopes that we can get this transfer approved. Oftentimes, I've inquired as to what constitute improvements. You know, how much money they have to spend improving before the Commissioner would, Commission would realize it as improvements. And we could never get an answer. It was always, the Commission has the last say. The Commission has the last say. So we always ask, I always ask, you know, what, so I can advise my client, if there's even a possibility that they could profit. I'm fully aware of the rules concerning vacant lots. They cannot be so far profit. But then there's exceptions to that and pastoral lots in regards to improvements. And so I'm here on behalf of Mr. Mika because he inherited this property. And who's to say or hold back his inheritance because he's profiting off a vacant lot? You know, I've been doing this for over 30 years. And what's the difference between a homeowner with a dwelling on their lots profiting $200,000, $300,000? And this gentleman who has a vacant lot and did minimal to it cannot profit? This is his inheritance. And that's why I'm here, because I was always told Commissioners have the last say. I know it's been recommended that it be denied, but we're just coming to you to request that the transfer be approved.
Let's see, questions? Mike?
Thank you Chair, and thank you everyone for all the input. Yeah, so for one, you know, in looking through item D10 and with regards to the department's recommendation, when you read through the discussion, it's not really, really simple to try to figure out why is the department recommending denial? So I think, one, if, you know, you could elaborate a little. I see in the third paragraph under discussion talk about the LSC or Mr. Mika would like to sell the property. And you know, in the back, the last paragraph actually starts at the bottom and ends on the back on the top of the back page, page two. It talks about that, you know, the undeveloped lot, undivided interests or any interest therein shall not be sold but may be transferred. So I mean, I take it as because Mr. Mika is planning to sell, it's not allowed. Can you elaborate on where is this regulation and rule that we're following? So I think it'd be helpful for everyone to understand why the department is recommending denial.
Thank you Commissioner. Again, what's the prevailing policy for the reason for the denial, the denial of this transfer is basically Hawaii Administrative Rules 10336, which states in paragraph A, a LSC with the written approval of the Commission may transfer the leasehold to any individual who is at least 18 years old and qualified under the Act provided that leases for vacant or undeveloped lot and undivided interest or any interest therein shall not be sold but may be transferred for no consideration or by succession. The transfer request that was submitted by the LSC, Mr. Mika, and was also completed by the transferee confirms that the property is being sold or the lease is being sold in the amount of $175,000. There's also an email that the Realtor confirmed that the property is being sold. Again, looking at 10336, selling of a property that is vacant or there's no improvement shall not be sold. And that's basically the basis for the denial.
Okay, so just a quick follow-up one. So I just want to go on record and state, you know, with regards to the Iona family. I think they're a very, very strong, great family. And the testimony we heard really speaks highly of the Iona family. And I too think highly of them. And I don't know any of the Iona family, by the way. But I want to ask Juan, if this lease transfer is denied, does the lease remain with Mr. Mika?
That is correct. I just want to add that, again, the department, I personally don't question Mr. Iona's capacity as a farmer or as a person. Again, we are basically following 10363 that prohibits the sale of a vacant lot. Now, the reason we're making that recommendation is based on the rules. However, if the Commission elects to accept the improvements that has been submitted with respect to the clearing of the lot and the water meter, that's up to the Commission to accept those improvements as improvements noted in 10336.
You have a question?
Chair, I have a question. Oh, go ahead.
And what about the $175,000?
What about it Commissioner?
Yes, what about it? I mean, first, did they know that they couldn't sell it?
As Ms., or Charmaine indicated, she knew. She knew that it couldn't be sold. But they're coming before you with the hopes that the evidence of some of the minimal improvements, using Charmaine's words, is that the Commission will consider approving the transfer based on the improvements, at least what's noted in the receipts that was provided.
So if they withdraw their $175,000, then that makes it okay?
Yeah. Again, the Act basically says that a transfer of vacant, unimproved lot cannot be sold but can be transferred without consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I guess what they're saying is there's a little bit of improvements that were justified. So it would fall outside this particular rule because there's some improvements. They could sell it for $175,000.
For us to accept.
Yeah.
Chair, I have a question.
Commissioner Neves?
So a lot, a lease number 6265, is that an agricultural lease?
Yes.
And Mr. Mika has a lot in Puukapu, is that an agricultural lease?
Mr. Iona has a lease in Puukapu.
Oh, Mr. Iona, okay, let me get that straight.
So you have two?
So he has two ag lots? You can't have two ag lots.
You can have two.
Can you?
You can only have one residential, one ag or pastoral.
Right. Yeah, you're right, Mr. Iona. Mr. Iona knows you can have detached lots as long as it doesn't exceed the 40 acres aggregate.
Okay, so you can't have two collectively, 140.
You can have a multiple of ag lots as long as it does not exclude, exceed the 40 acres.
Okay, that's in the rule.
That's in the rules in the Act.
Okay. Other question?
Can I get a copy of that rule?
Commissioner Walter.
Juan, my question is that if we have an unimproved lot that Mr. Mika probably acquired once upon a time, and he improves that lot to make it more attractive, does that fall within the rules to be able to transfer and give consideration for the improvements?
Again, it's the question of improvements. Most of the Commissioners here may recall the issue of profiting on a vacant lot. And it's my understanding that the permitted interaction group could not determine or did not come up with a, have not yet come with a conclusion with regards to that permitted interaction group whether or not to allow the sale of leases. But the Commission allowed for the department to proceed with amendment of the rules, which was completed in 2017. And 10336 is the result of that amendment to the rule. Again, the question is individuals, LSCs, profiting from a lease that a individual either received by way of an award from the department or by succession who did not make any investment on the property and profiting a large sum of money from another native Hawaiian. And that's the question that's before you. Do you want to allow this transaction to proceed with $175,000 price tag that Mr. Iona has to pay, which is, in my mind, prohibited by 10336?
Chair, so there's two parts to this, right? First of all, is interpretation of what improvements actually are. That's one compartment. The other compartment is the profit aspect of this. We're always tasked with following the Act. We're always tasked with really following what Prince Kohio's vision was. We are in a housing crisis right now. We have 28,000 plus people on the waitlist who have nothing. I know that, I don't know this particularly, Iona family, but I know Max and the rest of the people in Waimea. Nothing but aloha and respect for them. But to look at this picture, the big picture, like... where we, was the act implemented to make money off of, off of, off of the land that you either were awarded or, or, you know, or, or a successor to? That's kind of where the, the sticking point for me is. Knowing that we have beneficiaries dying on the list, knowing that we have families coming here every month, that's the same thing over and over and over again, and seeing the emotion attached to that dialogue, it's hard. So nothing against the Iona family, but it's hard for me right now because of the profit angle of it, the profit aspect of it, on top of what exactly is improved, what exactly are improvements? You know, people are selling their, I saw one of the submittals, $675,000. Average Hawaiian can't afford that. So I think, oh, this is another component which is attached to the housing crisis that our people are going through. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, it kind of struck me in the information that was provided was the fact that, I mean, there's some improvements, you know, cleared part of the lot, got a water meter. So there's improvement without a doubt. The thing about it is when you look at the person that's trying to dispose of it, I mean, the guy is houseless. He's recently evicted, he's on the street. And so it's very unlikely that he's going to move forward and trying to improve this lot that would otherwise just be sitting there unimproved. The Iona family has a track record of improving their land, using their land to the max, and I anticipate that's what they are looking forward to do, doing. I guess even with a strict interpretation of that particular rule that you're justifying, denying it, it does allow where there is some improvement that you can sell it. Now, is that worth $175,000? That's debatable, probably not, but it is saleable. And this transfer under the rule could take place with that. So I'm kind of, I can see the bigger picture where both sides are being helped. But more importantly, our land is being used in a productive way. So I'm definitely supportive of what's being suggested regarding the transfer. Any other comments?
Chair, Chair, could we, I'd like to, like to have, I'm sorry, yes, Leo. Can we go into executive session? Because there's a question of, of value. And I think it's important the commission at least give direction to the department on what we consider value moving forward. Because I know this was, for, just for everybody's edification, for years, we had problems where people would pick up a vacant lot from somebody and then turn around and sell it and make big money off it. And, and we don't want that to start over again. So we got to come up with some kind of, what's reasonable? What percentage is reasonable improving a lot? You got five acres, you put in a fence, that's thirty grand. That's big money. So I, I think it's important to the commission to have a discussion about that in executive session. I'll make a motion, move to executive session, please.
Just one more comment, please. And I agree with, with your assessment and I also agree with yours and I, I, I wholeheartedly feel like, I don't want to be, we're not trying to be greedy. This, this lot went up for sale. It was way higher than we wanted to pay. My dad, just to give some more context, and it's, it's kind of in that letter, that his testimony. My dad was awarded some kalima money based on his being denied or kicked off the list many, many years ago. Told that he was, that, that Hawaiian homes was for poor Hawaiians and that he should buy, he should buy outside. And so this, in, in some ways, this, the poetic justice of this money coming in from kalima, we said, well, that's what we'll offer to, to make this right and get that pana eva lot that he had hoped for, you know, back in the, was it the seventies then? So anyway, August, August nineteen seventy-six. So we don't want to be greedy. I totally, I totally understand. I feel very strongly that Hawaiians should not be profiting off of, off of vacant lands from, from Hawaiian homes. The question for us was just, what is, is this considered a vacant land? If not, I mean, the, the place, the place is valuable to us beyond money. And so that's, you know, that's what we're here for.
I apologize if, if my, if my dialogue.
Nope.
I wasn't trying to say that.
Not, not, not at all. I, I heard every word you said and I, and I understood and I, I feel the same thing and I respect it. Thank you.
Chair.
Okay, so what do you suggest?
Chair.
So we should move these guys off and then go with the next item, agenda item? Okay, we're going to go into executive session at twelve noon and we'll consolidate.
Chair, we have, Kelly Keeney has a question.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Kelly Keeney?
No, yeah, no, if we're gonna go into exec session on this item, I, I was just gonna suggest that we ask for public testimony similar to what we did in the previous item. If we're gonna go into exec session now, if not.
Not now, we're gonna do one more agenda item. We're planning on doing the executive session at twelve noon and so we'll just consolidate that one with this one. So if you guys can kind of hang loose a little bit and we'll go into executive and we'll make up a ruling at that point. Thank you. Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to, I've been a Realtor for thirty, over thirty years. And, you know, when I, when it comes to pricing and what people want for it, it's probably where they get, they get this price from. It's usually what I ask them what they want for it. What would it take for them to relinquish it? And what would the buyers pay for it? It's up, that's where the value is. Because if you ask an appraiser, there's no value in it. But the value really in homestead is what the buyer is willing to let, pay for it and what the seller is willing to relinquish it. Because if it's not worth it to them, they'll just keep it, sit on it for another forty years. So that's where the value is. I just wanted to let you know, I didn't come up with this, you know, it's something that he wa, wanted and he felt it's his inheritance, basically. You know, and I just want to make that clear, where the price comes from.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so we'll take your thing up on, at noon and then after that we'll come back. Thank you. Okay, the next item, E1, approval of lease awards for Pu'u Hona subdivision. Phase one, Kalani Franda?
Aloha, Chair Watson and Commissioners. My name is Kalani Franda, acting administrator with the Land Development Division. Also welcome incoming Commissioners, Commissioner Kalapa and Commissioner Lasua. We are gonna present E1. I'm gonna turn it over to the presenter and Michelle Hitsman, acting housing project administrator, I mean, manager, sorry.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Again, Michelle Hitsman, acting housing project branch manager. This is item number E1. Recommended motion is the approval of the residential lot leases that are listed below for the Pu'u Hona subdivision phase one.
Okay, is there a motion?
Go move.
The second? Okay, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, E2, approval of findings of no significant impact for the Honokauai Water System Improvement, the final environmental assessment.
Doing the presentation is Neil Nugent. He's our engineer, engineer five with LDD.
Aloha, Commissioners, aloha, Chair.
Hello.
Neil Nugent, engineer, Land Development Division. Pleased to bring to you item E2 for your decision for a finding of no significant impact of the final environmental assessment for Honokauai Water System Improvements Project. We have a brief presentation. This is West Maui. At the bottom of this figure is the shoreline and Honoa P'Ilani Highway. To the right of the figure is Lahaina. To the center is the Ka'anapili Golf Course area. In white are Hawaiian homelands outlined, villages of Leili'i, the existing subdivision, and on the left side of the figure, Honokauai. This environmental assessment deals with a, a well that was drilled in 2010, approximately nine hundred feet deep, which will yield one million gallons per day of drinking water. This well does not have any of the equipment necessary to use it yet, so this project will build a pump station for pumping the water, a control building, a disinfection system so that the water can be used for domestic purposes, electrical components, a control tank, Maui County, a Maui Electric Company transformer, standby generator. And on the red line in this figure, that represents about eight thousand feet of, of twelve inch ductile iron water main that will transmit the water from the well to the mixing tank that is being constructed by Department of Water Supply in Maui, the county of Maui. Next slide, please. Now, this is the same area, just showing the well site in the very center of the figure. As you can see, it's Maoka of the department's Honokauai lands. Next slide, please. So this is a summary of what the improvements will do. Also, on, on the left of this figure in blue are the Honokauai agricultural lots that is in phase, that is in design phase currently. The, so the finding of no significant impact for the surrounding environment was determined. And on April eighth, the draft environmental assessment was published. Next slide, please. The summary of our environmental assessment is that the land use is not anticipated to have, have a significant impact on the surrounding environment. The project will use mitigation measures and the project is consistent with the DHHL General Plan, Maui Island Plan, Villages of Leili'i, Honokauai Regional Plan, and the Water Policy Plan. Next slide, please. There were informational briefings on this subject in 2022 and 2023. On March eighteenth, I brought to the commission the anticipated Fonzie and the draft environmental assessment, which was published in April. Today, I bring to you the final environmental assessment, which we will, assuming your, your decision to approve, will be published on July twenty-third. Next slide, please. Thank you for your attention, Mahalo.
Okay, the motion to adopt this finding?
So move.
The second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you, Chair.
Mahalo, Commissioners.
Okay, next item, F1, approval of annual renewal of revocable permit pilot program. Gahan, Albinia?
Aloha and good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to also welcome newest Commissioners, welcome aboard. Item number F1, LMD is seeking the approval to annual renewal of revocable permit pilot program, revocable permits on the island of Oahu. These are permits that were issued to, to recipients, one for a business RP out in Kalailoa and one for a community RP out in Waimeanalo. Again, we're asking that the Hawaiian Homes Commission approve the following actions: renew Oahu Island revocable permit pilot program, revocable permits only as listed on Exhibit A and identified by approximate location on the Oahu Island map, Exhibit A1, that are in compliance and issued temporary approvals as of August first, two thousand twenty-four. If you look at the table that I provided on Exhibit A, there is one that we have already terminated. They were unable to take possession of the property. So we had moved to terminate that, that permit. And the only one that we have for approval to renew is the Waimeanalo Community, Ke'Kula Nui Waimeanalo revocable permit. Item B is inspection, inspection report is referenced on Exhibit B attached here. Two, C, the revocable permit annual renewal period shall be on a month-to-month basis for up to twelve months, but no longer than June twenty, thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. And D, we want to authorize the chairman to negotiate and set forth other terms and conditions that may be prudent or deemed to be appropriate and necessary.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Uh, it's been moved in second. We have a witness that wants to testify. Patty, there we go.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. I, I am supporting this submittal. And I remember as a former commissioner on this board in 2019, we did go through the revocable permit program. And I just wanted on record that the LMD did such a good job on this client, Connie's Trucking, and gave them, provided one acres, which the commission supported. But from the time that it was distributed to him, he has never stepped on the property. And so I just wanted also for the record that you folks did a good job in working with the client of Connie's to be able to have this property and you know, things were said that the department didn't do their job and on and on, you know, on the, on the wine side, but that's not really true. Working with LMD and seeing and as a commissioner and myself and Russell Kaupu at that time, we were pushing for him to get this property as one acre in, in a revocable permit program, but this didn't work out. So I do support this. This will release the one acres and we can, LMD can also provide it to someone else that is waiting for this parcel. So thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay. Commissioner Neves?
So, Gahan, number four eight eight, there's a delinquent amount of $47,000 in the sixty-four. Where is that at? Is that with the AG?
Yeah, that would be with the AGs if anything, but right now, since they haven't taken possession, we haven't received anything from them.
Right.
Yeah.
But we're, we're pursuing that amount.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So, so does this sort of wrap up Oahu as far as all of our revocable permits or we still have more?
We, we are in the process of preparing more offerings for the RP program.
You've got plenty, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so hopefully within, I'd say by September, we'll have some offerings out for Kalailoa.
Okay, very good. Well, well, you satisfied Patty, so as long as you satisfy Patty, you know, you're okay.
We're gonna have other, the neighbor islands also, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, very good. Good work. Thank you.
Yeah.
It's two in a row with Patty, man. What's going on?
Right, the hammer.
Complimentary, boy. Hey, we must be doing things right here at the department, I guess. Anyway.
I had a, I had a quick question. Can you, can you talk about the Waimeanalo property?
Yeah, so that's the one right on the highway. It's Ke'Kula Nui Waimeanalo. It's a nonprofit organization that helps out. In fact, I think all the members or directors of that association are, are homesteaders. So they help the community out with the, they're also part of that Limu Hui program. So there's a bunch of stuff that they help the community out with.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted that on the record, that we're not just kind of approving things without understanding who these ones are.
And they continue to maintain the property. I know it gets overgrown at, at times, but they've been able to, you know, maintain it and keep the brush down and all that stuff, so.
Yeah.
Gahan, I have a question. What is the difference between a month-to-month permit and a one-year permit? Like on another, the middle, it's like.
The, the one-year permit, it's, the revocable permit is under chapter one seventy-one of the HRS, one seventy-one fifty-five. So revocable permits are for a year, but sure, they're annually renewable, but they're month-to-month kind of thing. So we can go in thirty days, give a notice and they got, you know, they gotta get, same thing, they can tell us, we gotta get it within thirty days. Okay?
Okay, Mahalo.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number F2, in the agenda item, I just want to make sure I correct myself in the agenda on the actual agenda. It says approval to amend. It should have approval to Second Amendment of Amendment, Amendment of Right-of-Entry Number seven oh eight. It reads, as I had mentioned in, in the item, in the actual item submittal. However, in the agenda, it reads differently. So you should add in the agenda amend, approval to Second Amendment of Right-of-Entry Permit Number seven oh eight in the actual agenda.
Okay, you want to talk about it?
In addition to that, as, let me, let me present the submittal first, okay? So again, LMD is requesting that the Hawaiian Homes Commission approve the following actions. A, oh, shoot, I did the wrong one. Sorry. Recommended action is that the Hawaiian Homes Commission grant us approval to the Second Amendment. to the Second Amendment to Right of Entry Number 708 issued to Frank V. Colosio Construction Company Incorporated for the purpose of extending the term of an additional 12-month period. Approval of this amendment is subject to the following conditions as listed.
Just a question. So this wouldn't be under a revocable permit?
No, this is not.
Just right.
This is a right of entry, correct. And in the second paragraph of page one, second paragraph, it says, "On December 19th, the Hawaiian Homes Commission approved the Second Amendment." It should be the First Amendment. So if you can replace the word "second" with "First Amendment." Sorry for the typos.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, just a comment. On July 3rd, the three of us, the Oahu commissioners, went to Papakolea and we had a meeting with Pumi Kehoea as their committee. And they wanted us to know that they support this particular proposal. Thank you.
Actually, we should get a motion going there. Want to make a motion?
Yes, I'm so moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Item number F3, I'm not sure if we have those participants on board. Mr. Jonathan Ho and Christopher Kishimoto. The subject item matter that is up for consideration is approval to amend Right of Entry Permit Number 706 issued to the State of Hawaii Department of Agriculture out in Waianalau, Island of Oahu, subject TMK listed in the submittal.
Okay, extend the motion so we can discuss.
So move.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, commissioners. Item number F4, LMD is recommending that the Hawaiian Homes Commission grant its authorization to amend General Lease Number 288 issued to Kapalee Community Development Corporation for the use of Pad 3 and the remaining portion of the land area set aside for community uses subject to the following conditions. Item number one, the additional land area to be incorporated will be Pad 3, 11,500 square feet, and the remaining portion of the yet-to-be-developed parking area, approximately two acres as shown in Exhibit A. And two, except for the land area, all of the terms and conditions of General Lease Number 288 shall continue to be full in full force and effect. With me today, I have KCDC President Michelle Kahane and Executive Director Chantel Kiliho'Omalu. They wanted to also present, or if you guys have anything else to say, but they have a presentation to share also.
Proceed.
Mahalo, Chair Watson and Commissioners. Welcome, Commissioner Kalepa and Commissioner Lasua. Happy to be here. So just again, Michelle Kahane, I am a homestead lessee in Kaupia, and I serve as the president of the Kapalee Community Development Corporation. And I'm just gonna walk us through a couple slides. You can skip the next and go to the third. So today, we just want to share an overview of who we are, Kapalee Community Development Corporation, which we will refer to throughout this presentation as KCDC. I want to highlight the purpose and the programs of the Kapalee Heritage Center and Ho'omaka Marketplace, which are two parcels that were awarded to our nonprofit, one for community uses and one for revenue generation to help support those community uses. And then third, to request, as Kahana articulated, for the use of Pad 3, which is in the Kipuka. For those that are not familiar, the Kipuka is right beyond the Kapalee Yor DHHL parking lot. That is a community space that was designated by DHHL in the Kapalee Regional Plan, and those pads are all for community space. That's where the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement is currently running their programs and our Heritage Center exists today. So just a little bit of background, our mission, and I want to acknowledge Auntie Homey, who sits there against that wall every single commission meeting. I looked terribly for a picture. I could never find a picture of her and Auntie Shirley, who are the founders and the original visionaries for KCDC, which happened under Micah Kanye's leadership when he was the chair at the Department of Hawaiian Land. And our mission is to foster cultural preservation founded in the tenets of community culture, education, and partnerships. And our vision for this homestead area is to be a vital and thriving group, instilling Hawaiian sense of community, incorporating our values in the daily lives of our beneficiaries. Our logo, which was on the front slide and in the corner of each of these slides, really talks about our collective kuliana, that our ancestors, when they built a place of value, the people each had kuliana to contribute, to help carry the stones. And so hapai pohaku is what we ground ourselves in and the values that we engrain ourselves at the board and through our organization. In 2007, Kapalee homestead leaders were aware of DHHL's regional plan and war, land awards being made directly to homestead organizations for community purposes. And in order to get those lands, there needed to be a survey of community to ensure that there was community buy-in to what was happening. And so Auntie Shirley and Auntie Homey did a door-to-door survey of all the existing homesteaders at the time that resulted in an initiative and the Kapalee Heritage Center. So our community said they needed a gathering space for cultural programs, a place for our community to get together, and a commercial kitchen. And so that is what they based the movement forward on. Today, KCDC is managed by an all-volunteer board with representatives from each of the four homesteads in the region. One board member from the homestead is a designate from the elected folks from that homestead association and the other a resident from that homestead. So there are four homestead associations, each, so we have two for each of those homesteads. Currently serving 1,109 homes with another 1,000 as you guys move forward with kaulu o kahai, and we welcome those families to our community. In 2008, KCDC got its 501(c)(3) status. We did the groundbreaking of Kipuka in 2009. And then, at the time, DHHL had a kulia i kenuu certification process that we had to comply with certain criteria in order to be awarded the lands. So our lands were awarded under that program in 2010 and 2011. I'm sorry, 11 and 12. So we have General Lease 290, which is the commercial property of Ho'omaka, where the Chick-fil-A and the 7-Eleven, as you come down the north-south road. And 2012, our general lease of Number 288 is where our current Kapalee Heritage Center with the commercial kitchen and classrooms are. I'll just say here, we opened our Heritage Center in 2016, and at the end of last year, in 2023, we did a groundbreaking for Ho'omaka. I want the commission to understand that what is happening in Kapalee is self-determination and self-sufficiency in action. These are not just words. These are hard-working beneficiaries who dedicate their time and energy, their blood, sweat, and tears, having no idea of how we were gonna develop a shopping center. But it took time, COVID happened, and it did it. That shopping center generates about a half a million dollars a year. Our first payment came in $35,000 in November. And that is how we were able to hire an executive director, how we are running our programs at the center. And I just want you to know that the idea of what you heard earlier this morning on how we rehabilitate the Hawaiian people by returning them to their land, us having control of the lands where we can generate revenue and create programming for our communities has been amazing. And I hope that we can see more of this through homestead communities across the state. So the two parcels, Ho'omaka 290, again, the Chick-fil-A and 7-Eleven, and then 288, the Heritage Center, right behind your parking lot is where we're at today. Again, these are just Phase 1. We built the Heritage Center in Phase 1 that's outlined here. That's where our two classrooms and our commercial kitchen exist today. We, the facility is operated, managed by KCDC, two classrooms, certified kitchen. Right now, we are bursting at the seams. We have about 520 users for our all kinds of programs throughout the week. Over 2,000 individuals using the center every month, which is about 25,000 individuals using those two little classrooms on an annual basis. We're fully booked. And so that's just a picture of the classrooms, the commercial center, I mean, the classrooms, the kitchen, and the outside of the building. Just last year, we are, the first time we hired, our first hired staff. So I'm gonna turn this over to Chantel Kiliho'Omalu, who is also a lessee of Kanihili, and she's gonna walk us through those programs.
Aloha, Commissioners. So in 2018, we started a homestead health survey and that was to identify chronic diseases in community. And that's part of CBPR, which is Community-Based Participatory Research Methods, which we did in partnership with Kula Nona Po'e Hoi from Papakolea. From that, we created programs, brought in Ikehula, which is a study to identify if culturally-relevant practices can delay the onset of Alzheimer's and related dementias. We just finished our first cohort on that, and we have our second one. It's created immense empowerment for the people to take control of their health and provide community cohesion or create community cohesion. That, and then the next one is Piliaina Garden Box. Again, is a health program in partnership with Kula and Jaapsum UH, Department of Native Hawaiian Health. Will be looking to identify if we can reduce health conditions with that, with bringing in fresh produce boxes, garden boxes, kalamai. We want to note that the Olamau Ika Hula program is taught by our own Kumuu Kula Tati Sue Fox, who's a resident and lessee of Kanihili. The Kupuna programs are provided by Alulike Weekly. Those are free programs. All of these are free programs. Ke Kiokaaina provides parent participation preschool. We have free ukulale classes, who's taught by Kumuu Larry Santos, who's also a Kanihili resident, and Papa Olaro Hava'i. Free classes that is taught by Kapala Wong, who is a lessee, and kaulu o kahai. This was the original vision of Ho'omaka Marketplace. It changed a little bit through COVID based on the retail scene on the outset of COVID. So the smaller building in the top left is now Chick-fil-A parking. So it kind of worked out well in a way. And we will be nested, we have, we talked about it in the next slide, is the Elamau Scenery Space, which will be on the left side of Long's. So in Ho'omaka, we have a general lease from the department and we have a sublease for 59 years to the commercial developer, KZ. And they constructed the, what we see now, the Ho'omaka Marketplace with Long's, Chick-fil-A, 7-Eleven, and a couple more things to come, one of which is a 1,200-square-foot Elamau Scenery Space. They'll be managed and operated by KCDC. And we are currently negotiating with Ke'ola Mamo, who is the Oahu Native Hawaiian healthcare system to sublease that Elamau Scenery Space from KCDC to generate additional revenue for KCDC and provide healthcare for residents in the Kapalee area. The ground lease rent supports funding for completion of our Phase 2 and Phase 3, which is the larger halau, to complete the gathering, the original vision of having a gathering space. And Phase 3, which will have additional program space, office space for KCDC and the four homestead associations, an honorary space for Prince Kohiyo, and whatever else we can squeeze into it because we want to maximize everything. And all of this is to increase our capacity to serve our beneficiaries, to get them on our land, to fulfill the visions that were set forth in front of us. This is our pohaku right now. Next slide. So this was a picture from the groundbreaking at Ho'omaka Marketplace. So what we see here is the, in the blue and the red boxes is our vision for Phase 2 and Phase 3. The unmarked area is what we currently have, the two classrooms and the commercial kitchen. Above the blue box is Pad 3, and this is what we, and then the parking areas. So in the red box is the halau that we would like to build, and we will build, that will provide spaces for larger gatherings for our homesteaders. And then in the blues box, blue box is Phase 3. We would like to be able, so here, oh, yep, you can go forward. So this is a diagram of Kipuka. Pad 1 and 2 is where CNHA currently are. Pad 4 and 5 is where our Heritage Center is right now. And the parts in red striping is the area that we are requesting to add to our lease.
So I just will add for Chantel, right now, we're currently working with a grant award from the department to our planning and design of Phase 2 and 3. So now that we have Ho'omaka revenue coming in, we have money to do the next phases and to build out. It's an estimated $11 million for the next two phases of those buildings. So we got our work cut out for us. But as we're moving forward with that planning and design, there's only one in-and-out of the Kipuka right now from the entrance where CNHA is. And so we're trying to think about, once we hire our contractor or the designer, what is the best way to master plan that Kipuka to best serve our community? Where does the parking lot go? Do we need another in-and-out to that parcel? And so that's where our request for Pad 3 is coming from. And again, as noted in the slides, Pad 3 was originally awarded to Ke'ola Mamo with no activity happening for over 16 years. And so that was canceled by the department. We do want to partner with Ke'ola Mamo, and we are in current conversations with them about occupying the Elamau Scenery Space at Ho'omaka so that their services are available to community. But we're asking for that extension of our lease to include Pad 3 and the red striped area.
So the numbers, I just also want to point out, the numbers that we put up there don't include our annual events such as the Kohiyo Di Parade and the Imu fundraisers and numerous events throughout the year, as well as we just opened up the space to use for families, for luas. In the interim, before we have our actual building, we are allowing people to come and have their parties. People are extremely grateful. And we're literally, right now, we are living out the dream, right now. We're living out that dream and the vision that the department set out with Kulia i Kenuu program and that our founders set forth and identified from our communities. And I see firsthand people who are coming on for the cultural programs and for use of for gathering purposes, and they're so extremely happy. And we want to be able to get Pad 3 and the balance of Kipuka so that we can master plan and get the best and highest use out of the property to facilitate as much programs as we can for everybody.
The last thing that I'll add is that this presentation that you are seeing today, KCDC hosts our homestead leaders at a quarterly holovy where we welcome the boards of each of the four homestead associations to participate. Our holovy was held on Saturday with support from our homestead leadership in the region. We did not have participation by Kanihili, but we did have participation from the other three homesteads and KCDC, who are in full support of the presentation that we're sharing with you.
Any questions or comments? Not, Chair will entertain a motion to take action.
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Keep up the good work. Okay, we're gonna go into executive session. The commission will convene an executive session pursuant to Section 92584 HRS to consult with its attorneys on questions and issues pertaining to the commission's moral duties, privileges, immunity, and liability. Thank you, everyone.
We'll share them to the next session.
Yeah.
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Those opposed, motion care.
Okay. Let's folks come out.
We gotta wait for him.
I would only get you one.
Hold on.
It's not necessary.
You don't, sorry?
No. I wanted to thank you folks for your patience. We did go into executive session. We reviewed the legal part of it as well as discuss merits as well as possible precedent setting. But yet at the same time, we felt that it should be addressed on a case by case basis. And therefore, we'll chair entertain a motion to go along with the sale.
Yes, make motion that we move along with the sale.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's granted.
Thank you very much.
Apollo, no law.
Thank you, thank you for your patience. Sorry for putting you in position. I want to see a lot of trees, crops and all kind of thing going on there, man.
I get the farmer.
The farmer.
I can tell you're a hard worker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go talk to the lawyers too.
You're a good, good, awful worker.
He's very good, yeah.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for working in the fire department, man.
F5, but we're waiting for Kohana. Or, you know what, we can do C2.
Yeah, C2.
Chair, can we have Juan come up for us, we started explaining, he wasn't here.
Okay, never mind.
Juan, could you come up and have a seat? So Juan, we just wanted to let you know that, you know, in executive session, we decided that based on the amount of money they spent and what's been done. And we looked at, we looked at the fact that we have sort of a positive improvement coming forward. So there's no disrespect to you or the policy, but we do, I think these kind of matters may have to come to the commission if you're saying, hey, you need to stop here, where is the value? Then it may have to come to the commission for values. So we just want to let you know that was our decision moving forward. We felt there was significant enough money to say, let's move forward and really have something positive on the other side. We have another person that has already proven and that's why we moved forward.
So the sale price of 175,000 stands?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Juan.
Thank you. Thanks, Juan. I'm ready, John. That's cool.
Oh, okay, okay, go ahead, go ahead, you ready?
Oh, D1. What he's got to do is D1. Okay, D1?
D1, again, commissioners, Juan Garcia, Home State Services Division Administrator. Before you are the respective reports associated with the lease applications as well as the loan delinquency report. If you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer any at this point.
Okay, any questions? Otherwise, it's just for information only. You've got all those items? Nope? Okay, thanks, thanks, Juan.
You're welcome. Thank you, commissioners.
C3.
B3.
C2, C2.
Thank you, C2. Okay, item C2?
Okay, C2. Yes, you read it. It's C3 then.
Okay, what is this? I just read it out. Oh, they, oh, okay, the permitted group we set in an hour.
Permission, yes.
Okay. Oh, you want, okay, okay. Just formal here.
Let me take this over here.
Oh, over.
What are we doing, C2?
C2.
Okay, this is the PIG seminar was for information only, appointment of immediate interaction group pursuant to HRL section 92, 2.5 and HPL section 10, 2.16, D1. Study, evaluate and recommend policies, guidelines and strategic strategies related to the use of caretakers by lesses during their extended absence.
Okay, so we're gonna have commissioners Michael Leakini, Dennis Neves and Sanoi Marfil be on that PIG. Now you guys set up your schedule, we'll work with you.
Very good.
Thanks. Oh, Juan, Jermaine Meyer? We're on C2, we're getting the PIG. I'm sorry, Ben. Where?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I had, I had signed up for D10. I had signed up for D10 and I wasn't given the opportunity to speak about it. I know you said that you guys have made a decision during executive session when it's supposed to be made outside, which you did and you overruled the staff's recommendation. My concern is that you voted in support and in favoritism of this beneficiary to get the transfer and make the payment. And all due respect, I do respect the beneficiary's request, but what about all those in the past that Juan had followed the rules and had told them, no, they couldn't, they couldn't sell it because they never made improvements? And so I just wanted the commissioners to take into consideration when you don't follow, I'm not saying all staff, but Juan Garcia, he's been there for years. And when he makes a recommendation, he knows the commission, the commission, the act. And he's not gonna make recommendations based upon something that he just wants to favor. He's not about politics or anything like that. And so I just want you all to consider that you're making, yes, you are making a precedent, but not only for the future, but for the past, for people that Juan told no to because he was following. For people that Juan told no to because he was following the rules. So maybe they could have got three hundred thousand, maybe they could have got two hundred thousand. But you guys denied them, Juan denied them because he followed the rules that no improvements were made. So I just wanted to point that out to the commissioners. Mahalo for the opportunity.
Aloha again, commissioners. Kahana Albinio, Income Properties Manager, Land Management Division. Item number F five. L M D is seeking the approval that the Hawaiian Homes Commission approved issuance of a non-exclusive right-of-entry permit to charter Communication Operations LLC for the purpose of accessing Hawaiian Homelands parcel situated in Hoolehua, Aranok Molukai. Identified by the T N Ps as listed and delineated on exhibit A for the purpose of installing telecommunications coax cable equipment and apparatus. The disassociation of issuance of a non-exclusive right-of-entry permit to charter Communication Operating LLC covering some areas subject to the following terms and conditions as listed under the submitted. There's eight items.
Here is our motion.
Motion group, second discussion.
None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Your Honor. Next item, C three for information only, status report during enforcement efforts. David Hope.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. David Hope with Department of Hawaiian Homelands Enforcement Unit. Again, agenda item C three. This is just our monthly update based off of the timeframe of June tenth through July seventh. In this timeframe, we've had ten requests for investigations, which, and also we generated fifteen reports, which brings a total of a number of requests for the year to seventy-eight. So during this period, we did one major cleanup operation at Camp Faith on Kauai. And it was a three-day operation. The parcel's kind of been fairly problematic as far as trespassing, illegal occupancy. Basically turned it into somewhat of a chop shop. So, you know, for, and especially for the new commissioners, in work like this, in addition to the three days of cleaning up, we did three contacts prior to that in which we had to go serve the right notices, make sure outreach is there. And really, we have to kind of make sure that we're staying in compliance with the mandated procedures because again, we don't want to leave the department open to possible, you know, legal ramifications. And we look at it as any lawsuit would be money coming out of the trust. So that kind of stuff, while it's not the most exciting thing, it's real tedious. And, you know, I appreciate the guys who are really sticking through because those days get long. Next thing, as far as the beneficiary engagement, we definitely listed that, I don't think she's here, but I want to thank Patty Teruia for the kind words. And we completely agree while we're still trying to figure out the process, what's best, what's working, you know, what to do in the future. We completely agree that what's paid off the most to this point is the beneficiary engagement. So we have to have those relationships. We need to stay in contact. We need to hear them out. Sometimes we get tongue lashing, but we just, you know, we take it and we try and take what information they're giving to us. And then we try and apply it in the best way possible to kind of move forward. Next slide, please. As I mentioned last month, we started making a focus on identifying the vacant homes, well, homes in Papukalea that appear to be vacant. So we looked at it as they have to appear to be vacant, dilapidated or unused. And I do have to make a correction. Since this started, we actually found out one more. So this number right here, that should actually be thirty-two, and then this number over here should be sixteen. So we've identified thirty-two parcels that we believe, you know, met this criteria. And as we started to look through them and knock on the doors and go there, two of them are actually occupied by the lessees. So we're able to eliminate those. Seven of them are in our inventory. And while, when you think about it being an inventory, should be getting ready to get re-awarded, the condition of those parcels are pretty bad. So it looks like it's gonna have to be torn down. So that's just something that, you know, we've submitted our reports, we're gonna be working with L D D. Anything we have to do to kind of get that process moving, we're gonna go and help push that. There are six more parcels that again, we identified, but there are some kind of transfer happening. Five of them are pending a transfer through successorship and one just a straight transfer. And so for those ones, we need to make sure that we're staying in contact with H S D. I think we need to establish some deadlines as far as getting the needed documentation to move those transfers forward. And I really need to stay on top of that even after the transfer goes through because again, the condition of these homes is not the best. I don't think they're gonna be moving ready right away, so it's gonna take some time. And these vacant homes, there's a lot of risk that it brings to the surrounding community. So we want to make sure that we're keeping an eye on these homes. One of them, one more home is pending a D N O, so meaning the commission already made a decision on it. And again, this is something that I believe we need to work with H S D on, but we need to kind of establish deadlines in which we're requiring things to happen. The movement has to happen because these homes have been sitting too long. And then the last sixteen, this is where we're really gonna have to work with H S D. We gotta locate these lessees wherever they are. And we got to, you know, find out what the problem is. Is it a funding issue? Do we gotta refer them to Nahazda? Is it, you know, some other situation? Really kind of figure it out. But if not, we may have to push as callous as it may sound, the tough issue of trying to cancel these leases. If you're not gonna occupy, that's, that's agreement that you made when you signed that lease. You have to occupy residential lots. So if they're in a situation where they don't need to occupy it, they're good somewhere else, you know, happy for them, that's, that's a good thing. But the agreement that they came in to the department with when they signed that lease is they're gonna occupy it. So I think we have to take a firmer position on that. Okay, then next slide, please. Okay, and then as far as our pilot program goes, this month, we got one new report that met the criteria. And to date, since it started in January of twenty twenty-four, we've received nine reports. And three of them are still pending, meaning those are still with H P D and are being deconflicted or being investigated by them. And next slide, please. And then, so happy to say that on June twenty-second, we took it to this next level of our pilot program. So the homes that were referred to H P D and they were monitoring them, they were watching it, making sure that, you know, they didn't have a case that we're gonna jeopardize. They gave us a green light on six homes that we could collaboratively go move on. So on, on the twenty-second, H P D, they gave us, I think it was five officers from Narco Vice. And we completed home inspections at each one of these properties. And so to me, you know, it was really important that we did take this step. Out of the six homes, one of them was in inventory, meaning there's no lessee assigned to it. It's, again, it's a home that's been boarded up, but it sounds like guys are breaking in, possibly using it for drug houses. Since then, and you gotta think, L D D, they went and they cleared, there was a ton of brush, they cleared the brush, we still have to secure the home. And really, this is, to me, something that we have to focus on as a whole, is either tearing down these dilapidated homes or getting them out quicker. Because these homes are always gonna be a target for this type of activity. Three other homes that we went to were unsubstantiated. And when I say that, I'm not gonna say that the allegations didn't occur, or we're not gonna say that they did occur. It's just, there was not anything there for H P D to build a case. And we went, there's again, nothing that we could say there was a lease violation actively occurring. So while there's nothing as far as the lease or contested case hearing that has to come, come next, what we're gonna do is we're gonna send a letter. Or we have sent a letter to these lessees in which we reminded them that criminal activity is a lease violation. Because historically, somebody has won an appeal by saying they did not know that. So again, nothing came of it, but we're putting it on record just in case we're back in the situation with this beneficiary again. You cannot use that excuse. You know that criminal activity is a lease violation and it's on file. This other one, there was one who actually admitted to a violation. We, it appeared based off of what H P D was looking at after the initial report came in, that it was a one-time type of thing. So in this situation, we've given them a deadline to go remediate the issue. We'll be following up. And again, we will be issuing a lease violation, which will go on the record. And based off of what appears to be activity done by adult, but still adult children of the lessee. I don't believe we should pursue it any further. However, again, we gave the lessee a stern warning that if this is, this is all you, this falls on you. I don't think there's enough there to kind of take away somebody's lease, but I do believe that putting them on notice is important. And letting them know that since we're just issuing this lease violation, we're not pursuing it anytime. And correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of my hope is that if we're back in the situation again, this will be two, two lease violations that we're coming after and forth. This initial one and whatever happens in the future. And then this one other situation that, again, we see fairly, fairly regularly is that we went and when we got there, the lessee, we spoke to the lessee. And she kind of told us about how during the time when the reports were coming in, she was actually chased out by her adult nephews. Meaning they're actively using drugs, kind of threatening her, intimidating her, and so she left the home. And it may, it did fit up with the timeline in which H P D confirmed that that's when a lot of the activity was happening. So again, we're happy, we confirmed that they're out. One of the guys got arrested, H P D confirmed that. But we also reminded the lessee that, again, you have to, you're in control of your parcel. You need to control who's coming in and out of your house. And so when we kind of debriefed about this, you know, Chair brought up a good suggestion. One thing that we should be doing is possibly providing resources to our beneficiaries. So in situations like that, you know, having some kind of card or information that, okay, you need to, this is your responsibility, but these are the resources that you need to have to go get your home back, to legally get your home back, because that's on you. And so again, it's a situation where I think it's important that we look at everything on a case by case basis and, and really try and do what's fair. Because in a situation like that, while it is the lessees' responsibility, I also understand the difficult position they would be in. So, next slide, please. And just kind of last but not least, I believe that this, this was our first one with the pilot program. This was a big step for the department. I think when we started this, the main point of starting it was people were saying that, you know, H P D and D H H L don't work together, or H P doesn't have jurisdiction, or you guys don't address these things. So I feel like even though nothing major came out of it, we didn't find, you know, machines or drugs, that's all good things. But the community who saw that, they know that they were taking this stuff serious. And H P D and D H H L, we are gonna work together. And we're fortunate that one of the lieutenants that was there, that he's actually a beneficiary, and he was, he's very happy about it. You know, they were all invested in it. They have equal investment and, and, you know, it's, it was a great thing. And again, I'm hoping that this type of collaboration, we can expand statewide. And this goes a long way because again, it tells the beneficiaries that we're taking this serious. But if you are considering it, odds are there's gonna be consequences. So I think.
Which one is this?
Well, the bottom left was, that's Waianae Valley, so that's right next to the, to the vacant home, the one that's in inventory. The one, bottom right, actually, top right is also Waianae Valley. And then the top one was debriefing prior to us going. And then bottom right is, was that one? That was after our last, our last house, we're just kind of talking over the scenario. But that's where the lessee was actually chased out by the relatives. So it was good, the lessee was transparent, but again, you know, H P D is.
So she's back in there.
She's back in the home now, back in control. And, you know, we just reminded her that don't let anybody else in if you can, if you're worried about that. So again, I think it's, it's real big that we're able to take this step. And then one more thing I just kind of wanted to touch on is that, you know, some of the beneficiaries that they make these complaints about it, we understand it's a long process. We have to, we have to build a case. The H P D has, has to, we have to give them the opportunity to look at it. So it does take time. Like some of these, H P D was watching for several months. And, you know, it's tough, but we have to let these things play out. And we just, we just ask the beneficiaries to continue to support that process. We always discourage, don't get on social media, don't blast pictures, don't do that. Because again, it can actually hurt the investigation. We actually might lose it. And then these guys can continue the activity down the line. So, you know, we just want to also remind them that the people that are being accused of these accusations, they're also still beneficiaries. So we're, we're in that weird place of trying to find the balance of keeping everybody safe, but those are still our beneficiaries. So we are going to follow the rules, give them due process, make sure it's fair, and everything has to be based on facts. So it's, it's a balancing act, but, you know, overall, I think everybody's been pretty happy with the results thus far, and we're just gonna continue to go. And yeah, next slide, and I just gotta also thank, you know, Major Lambert. Again, they gave us five guys on a Saturday, so I know that's time away from their families and stuff that they didn't have to do. And again, the associations, the N S Ws, they've been huge. So we're just gonna continue to work with them. Whatever information they can provide just, you know, helps us out because those are the eyes and ears for us. And that's it.
Okay, any comments?
One question. You work with L D D and you're able to help them also identify the vacant and abandoned homes.
Correct.
Yeah, I can see that we have a report for them, so I'll talk to them about those.
Okay.
Thank you.
David, we appreciate yours and Kip's and Nick's work out there. It's only three of you folks covering all of our properties. You know, we're concerned about your safety and your health, some of the places that you're going into. Couple of questions. How long from the first notice until we cancel a lease, roughly, just rough? And you can give a range, the quickest we do it, the longest we do it. I mean, longest is many years.
I honestly, I cannot answer that question. I cannot say that. I've seen that play out in my time with D H H L. I think that something should be established, but it has to be reasonable. And I will say that as far as the homes in Papukalea, they didn't happen, they didn't get in those conditions overnight, not even in a year. We're looking at a long time. So I think, I've known that when we touched on this back, when I was initially here, we sent out letters. I don't know what the follow-up was, but I do think that a year is more than reasonable for us to go through the entire process. Sending letters, public notice, and then bringing them to a contested case hearing. And I think that would be maximum. But these homes, they're in such bad condition that I think the department has to just be concerned that if somebody trespasses, that home can collapse. And, or even if nobody, it's a windy night, especially Papukalea with the hills, it can collapse, it can slide down the hill. You gotta worry about guys below you, guys next to you. So it's just, you know, it's definitely something that we want to push, and when we get it, everybody's swamped. But just looking at those, the conditions of the homes, we know that, you know, it's just almost a matter of time before something does happen. So I think if we can be more aggressive and proactive in at least bringing those homes down and mitigating the risk, I think that'll be huge.
Is it safe to say that some of those homes have been deserted for years?
Yeah, there's some with holes that are, you can just see right into the home. The roof is coming down, it's wide open. Yeah, it's overrun by trees. And that's actually how we found that, that last one when we changed it. And we're actually doing follow-up work and then Nick's like, yeah, I think we found another house. And it was just, you know, buried in trees. So, you know, it's, it's been a while. So I think it's long overdue. I want, I would like to really push this along because I know every time Chair and you guys go fight for money for the department, that's an easy comeback to ledge half. But what about the homes in Papukalea? So I think our job, what our unit is focused on is we can help the department by trying to make that number as close to zero as possible. Probably can never make it zero, but as close to zero as possible, the number of homes that are in our inventory, we want it zero. And so then when we go ask for money, you can say, yeah, we need money because we don't have any homes on the other one. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, and thank you for this report, you and your guys here. In, in looking at the report, now I guess, I guess there's two, two sides of it. I think one, it's on the department, or actually both of them are on the department in a sense that those parcels that are in our inventory, whether it's the seven or the six. Now, that's on us to move it along. Now, the other sixteen parcels that appear. now that's on us to move it along. Now, the other sixteen parcels that appear unoccupied or occupancy still unconfirmed, those are the ones that is a real challenge, because it's just Papua Kuaia. We, we got this in all the different homestead areas where we have unoccupied and parcels that just seem to be falling apart. The ones that are in our inventory, we got to either tear them down, or re-award them, or do something, and we need to really push that along and get active. Those that are just sitting there, unoccupied, or for whatever reason, and are leased out, that's where the department has to come in and meet with the homesteaders, or you know, whoever, to find out what the story is. You know, do you need help in maybe finding a contractor to replace your home? You know, when I, when I first left the department, we started a nonprofit, and we did about twenty-three homes, dilapidated homes. So we met with, I don't know, maybe four hundred of them that wanted to participate in a replacement home project. And it was just such a difficult situation, we're trying to work with families that are dysfunctional. And, you know, it, it's a real challenge. But that's what our whole program is about, rehabilitation. And so if we don't provide the resources and guidance, then how do we expect our beneficiaries that are in a very quandary, without resources, to avoid getting their leases canceled? So that's on us. And so I don't know what the answer is. I think part of it is reaching out to the, our third-party service providers, getting them active, working with the homestead associations, so they can give us some insight and guidance, as well as bringing on staff. Now, you can identify, but we need to go to the next step, where it's not an enforcement thing. It's really, really an opportunity to provide services. That's where, you know, that, that's the toughest part about this program, is that fortunately, we don't have the resources, but we need to change that. And that's where I think, you know, I'm not only hoping to work with the different commissioners from the different areas, but the homestead associations, our, our in-house staff, as well as the different service providers out there. It's going to be an ongoing challenge, but we cannot let, leave our communities to just deteriorate like they are right now. That's not acceptable, because it's a community that, you know, is in transition in, in a bad way. So we need to change that. So thank you for the report, and we got a lot of work to do in the department, as well as the different partners we have out there.
David, I will say that whenever I've been around you folks, all three of you consider the beneficiaries that are neglecting the property, and the beneficiaries yet to have homes who are on the waitlist, who would love to have an opportunity to to have a place where they could take care of it. So thank you for your hearts, we appreciate that.
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Nevis?
So, David, you and your team coming up to Camp Faith, that was a big deal, a lot of work. And I know we, we put in some temporary fencing and fenced it off. I'm working with Kaipo to try to get at least someone on a limited right of entry, so we could actually have some eyes and ears in there and a body in there. But just for your information, about a week ago, someone got stabbed on a beach right up from there. There was a couple of chronics from the same area. So what you've done is, is real help us, you know, clean that area up. And, and the community really appreciates that, and I appreciate your guys' help. I'd like to make one request, knowing that our meeting is going to be in Kauai next month, if we can do this assessment on those vacant parcels as well. We have, I know we have one house in, in Keihaha that's been empty for ten years. People passed away and their cars are still in the garage.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's, it's, it's, it's awful. You know, the neighbors are trying to fight the rats off and stuff, and that's something that, you know, unfortunately, it's in our inventory at, at this point. And, but anyway, I know it's dangerous out there. We, I'm concerned about that every time you come out. And I'm probably the guy that's calling you all the time, when are we going to do it? When are we going to do it? And I know there's a lot of agencies you have to coordinate with when you come out to the other islands. So I appreciate all your help, though.
We appreciate the kind words and, and, yeah, and I, I know that when you, you, you bug us, you're getting bugged. So I know it's not working for you. So, yeah.
Let me bug you than the thousands of people that are bugging me.
At least I only have one. You can, you can have the rest, I'll just take you.
Yeah, but we appreciate all your help, thank you.
But then as far as Camp Faith, you know, I, I agree that really all these properties, the biggest, I think the biggest long-term solution is we need those site control, because, you know, I'm, I'm glad we're able to chase them out, but it's just kind of like, you know, it's temporary. They'll be back unless, unless we have somebody in there. So-
We'll work with land development to make sure, or land management to make sure we get people on there. Thank you.
Okay.
And let me just add that, you know, you, the commissioners are the eyes and ears, as well as hopefully part of the solution, you know, like Camp Faith and some of these other areas that we clean up. But the best way to avoid problems is to have the areas used. And so with your guys' connections in the community, and if you're going to identify a nonprofit or whoever, please let us know. But also, you know, part of it is educating our beneficiaries out there that may want to participate in, whether it's South Point or Anahola or wherever, that we need to kind of make available the different resources, whether it's through CNHA, OHA, and these other organizations, they got resources. It's about time we reach out and work with them, partner with them, but more importantly, get your guys' input as to who in your community we can support and take over these different sites that are just going to continue, continue to deteriorate and be used for bad purposes unless we change that. So these guys have a tough job. So let's make it easier where we resolve some of these problem areas and get them used.
Any other comments?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
One witness testified, Pat Havaiala.
Hello, am I? Hear me?
Yes, you can.
I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm in my vehicle trying to get the, find a spot where I can get connection. As you well know, Chair, I'm in a, in an underserved area here in Hilo. So maybe when our broadband unit gets on board, we're able to get a better connection. However, I, I just want to, yes, I think Mr. Tengon is his name, I'm sorry. But just on this, just for clarification purposes, I'm sorry, I missed most of Mr. Hoag's details on the pilot program. However, you know, in, in Hilo, in Keokaa, and in Panaeva, and in Humula, where, where the lands are, I just want some clarification is whether or not, because I've, I've been getting all kind of innuendos, not from the department, but from people in the community saying this is happening, that's not happening, it can't happen. So I just need some clarification purposes from the, from the commission, whether or not the, I, I think I raised the question with you, Chair, and commissioners, that for about five or seven years in Aina Māna, we've, since they, since they stopped under Jovi Masakatani, the Aina Māna Legacy Plan, that, that we've had people that have now occupied, have, have taken over the this establishment there, the sheep station. Individuals putting fence across the roads, locking and chaining the fence across the roads with the, with the caveat that they own the land. Well, I, I need clarification for, for myself and for the community. When and if the department and/or HPD, not necessarily David and his crew, because they're, they're just a crew of three. I'm talking whether or not arrests can be made by, by by the HPD, in this case, Hilo. And, and only, the only reason I ask is for that clarification, for point of information, is because I have, I'm going to have a serious problem when, if the answer is they cannot, then, you know, this may be some liability to the trust when, when others were arrested and these guys are not. So I just need that kind of clarification. If there's simple trespassing, taking over properties, in this case, trust properties. So that's, that's my point for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
G1. Approval of the Kauai High Regional Plan Update.
Andrew Choi.
Aloha, Commissioners, I'm Andrew Choi, Planning Program Manager. Item G1, the recommended motion action, is that the Hawaiian Homes Commission approve the Kauai High Regional Plan Update 2024, and to authorize dissemination of the regional plan. With me today, I have Lily Makaila, who is the Hawaii Island Planner, who is the lead on this project. She'll be taking you through the presentation.
Aloha, Nui Kako. Lily Makaila, Planner with the Planning Office. Here today with item G1, this is the third time that I'm coming before you folks with this regional plan. So for those of you who are very familiar with all of the stats and the details, please bear with me. And aloha to our new commissioners. I hope to catch you folks up on this planning process. This is our update to the Kauai High Regional Plan. You can see in brown is the previous regional plan, and in green is our updated version. Next slide. Wanted to walk you folks through the actual planning process, which began just about one year ago. In August of 2023, we started this planning process with a leadership meeting. We reach out to our homestead associations and their leadership. We asked for guidance on what's the best way for us to engage with the beneficiaries. They help us with even the small details of what days of the week are best, what venue is best, how to invite our beneficiaries, and, and different ways that they think we can improve on our outreach and engagement. I would like to mahalo the Kailapa Community Association for all of their support throughout this process. In September of 2023, we had our first beneficiary consultation for this project. In October, we had the second one. The first two beneficiary consultations is mostly content-related. This is where we meet with our beneficiaries. In this instance, we were in person at their pavilion venue in the community. And this is where we asked them questions about how to come up with a vision statement, what they would like reflected as their community values. We talk about issues and concerns, and we also talk about things that are going to lead to identifying potential solutions or priority projects for the region. Beneficiary consultation number two, we actually went through and created a project ideas list. And the way that we asked folks to select the top five priority projects was a little bit of a newer process. We had four different options for folks to participate. And we were very happy to have a high number of participation. We had a hundred and five participants in the selection process for these priority projects. Talk about it a little bit more on the next slide. In February, we had, we came to this commission with a draft of the plan and shared the major components and asked for review and comment from commissioners. Most of the comments and concerns had to do with ensuring that we were providing a good beneficiary process, so that our beneficiaries could participate, that we were following our policies for beneficiary consultation. Also, in February of this year, we went out for our third beneficiary consultation with the community. And at this meeting, we received quite a few comments. The bulk of those comments were focused on priority project number one, which is the water Viola project. We, because of the substantial comments that we received at beneficiary consultation number three, we actually came again to this commission in May. And at that update, we incorporated, you know, majority of the mana'o that our beneficiaries wanted to see. And we discussed things in terms of short-term solutions to their water issues, midterm solutions to the water issues, and long-term, including as a short-term solution, incorporating a temporary subsidy to provide immediate relief for our beneficiaries who are experiencing exceptionally high water rates in comparison to all of the other water rates that we have, both DHHL systems, as well as our public water systems and the other municipalities. At that meeting, we did have several beneficiaries and members of the board who came as well, provided testimony and, and provided their mana'o. Most of it all focused again on that water priority project. And we're here today with the final. So we came in May to make sure that this commission was updated on the substantial changes between February and May. And we're here today to ask you folks to accept this plan. Next slide. For our outreach, we maintain a project website that's been shared with the community. The link is provided here. We did postcard mailings for each of the beneficiary consultations for the priority project selection poll as well, with a hundred and eighty-nine of our lessees located in Kauai High. That's inclusive of both Kailapa Homestead, the Maoka Homestead, and our Kauai High Makai lots, that are Makai of Okonikule Highway. In addition to that, all of our participants who provided email addresses were also given meeting announcements and meeting reminders by email. And we also had quite a bit of assistance from KCA, the Community Association, including specifically for the priority project selection. They went door to door and handed out the surveys and provided that information to the beneficiaries who hadn't attended at our previous consultation meetings. I briefly went over the meeting series as far as what content was discussed, but I've also included in here the number of participants. You can refer to those. I wanted to highlight the priority project selection poll, which had a hundred and five participants, majority of which were beneficiaries, sixty-nine in total, and thirty-six of them were other members of the homestead. Next slide. These are the values and vision that came from the community. Ehuhuehui Kupono is a carryover vision statement from a previous planning effort that the community put together. And through our discussion, they identified these six community values. Next slide. This is the voting for the priority projects. These are the top five projects that were selected. Just a quick note about regional plans. Regional plans is where the department works directly with our homestead community. And they help to identify potential project ideas for the region, and they vote on the top five projects. And that allows both the commission and the staff to understand what the community's priorities are within that region. And this will hopefully direct resources, both staff and funding where necessary, to what they have selected as their own priorities in the region. The top one here you can see is Water Viola. Again, a note, total votes were two hundred and forty. If you total up the other four priority projects, it's about the same. So half of all the votes went to this priority project out of the top five. The next is an emergency escape route and traffic safety measures. Then the Kailapa Resource Center, then safe energy upgrades, and finally, improve the coastal and marine resources in Kauai High through erosion mitigation. Next slide. I did, you folks did receive some testimony. So I received some later testimony that was sent via email. Just wanted to make sure that that was, made it to you folks ahead of the decision-making. We also heard from Auntie Jojo earlier. And I guess the next steps for this plan is, today we're asking to both approve or adopt this plan, as well as authorize the dissemination of the final plan to our community members. Mahalo.
Commissioner Craven?
Thank you, Lily and Andrew. Judging by the presentation, it's very meticulous. You guys obviously did due diligence. So I just thank you very much for taking those small steps to have the community involved and having a major part of this process. So, thank you, guys.
Just a remark, Chair. I've been in the listening sessions when you're trying to set up regional plans for Waianae. You folks do an amazing job with a wide variety of voices, some of them not as tame as others. But the patience that you folks have with your team members and working with the association is very commendable. I know that you folks are always very thorough. You stay there until the work is done. And so when we see that you produce a report like this, it doesn't represent the month that it takes you folks to get it done. So thank you so much for your work, Lily, Andrew. Mahalo.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I also have to echo that. Looking at the emails of support from across the community is very, very impressive. Jojo, I got you down as more public testimony. You already testified, but I'll give you a couple of minutes if you want to join in there. But just note that it's quite a few people in the community that want to move this forward.
Thank you, Chair. I did want to thank the community for at least coming forward to do something. But what I'd like to clarify is I am asking this commission to postpone it because there's a lot of us in this community that don't know about the final plan. They haven't seen the final plan. I didn't get to see it until Saturday, you know, when I saw the Hawaiian Homes Commission. So that's the kind of thing is the information is not distributed. So number two, I want to clarify that I am testifying to the problem with the plan. Just about everybody I know wants the water subsidy. And the water subsidy was taken without doing a regional plan. So I don't see why the commission cannot give us back the water subsidy. Now, the water subsidy started off with the department trying to find portable water. Okay, so it was a subsidy until Hawaiian Homes found water. Well, this whole time, we have not been able to do that. So I'm glad this update really focuses on that and the community participated in that. And hopefully, implementation will now follow finally. And water is a big, major problem for our community because everybody else is taking the water that were designated for Kauai High Homestead. And now it's all going to the resort. The second one now is going to the resort subdivision. And so, you know, those kind of things that we had, we lost. But my testimony is to update the plan, okay? And like Commissioner Kanayakua, I agree with what he says. And I agree with the association that we need the water. But that is not the plan, not only that. Okay, so I am asking for this team, they did a good job, but they have, they still don't have the information correctly. And so if that's going to take another month to fix up before they ask for the approval, that's what I'm looking at. It's the plan that needs to be fixed, okay? And I have sent my testimony, my amended testimony with a list of pages, figures, and what the problem is that I am asking to put in the plan because it's part of the land designation is going to get impacted. Number one is the harbor lots that you guys came to visit us in Kauai High. If you look at this plan that they are providing, those three lots are not in there. It, that whole area says commercial and industrial. What about them? You got to put them in the plan. And then you have a national historic site, the Isaac Davis Crypt. There's no conservation designation in the plan anywhere for any of the burial sites, the historic sites. I mean, that's where Kamehameha came from. And the Hawaiian Homes does not designate that kind of area. That's the kind of stuff that I'm looking to put in the plan. So I did send Andrew and you guys my testimony with the whole matrix so that I think these things need to be, especially like one of the figures, that place where you came in Polihi, Polihi Stream. There's a map inside there, but it's wrong. So I'm asking you to correct it. I mean, that's the kind of stuff I'm looking is the plan. I am focusing on the plan. I just wanted to clarify that. And so if it's going to take a postponement of approval, then that is what I'd like to ask. Get the plan right. Get the information on the plan correct. That's all I'm doing. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, just briefly, I wanted to mention a few things. So the plan itself, the bulk of the plan, didn't receive substantial revisions. So that has been available to the community for reviews since February. In May, I reached out to all of the participants and gave them the full submittal that we were bringing to the commission in May, which, and also identified that we would be coming to the commission again in July with the final document. We also, a couple of those things, the harbor lots. So we have included the Kauai High Makai Homesteads. But the lots that Commissioners visited in May, those are actually fee simple lots that are privately owned. They are surrounded by DHHL Hawaiian homelands, but they are not a part of the DHHL Trust. And so those folks are not a part of our homestead community and thereby not a part of the planning process. And then just one more note, the comments that I saw from Auntie Jojo, those are all excellent project ideas. And those are all very important things to the community. I think the challenge with our regional plans is that we leave it to our beneficiaries to prioritize. We are not able to prioritize, you know, the 20-plus project ideas that come about in discussion. And so we defer to them to select what our priority should be. And then our priority project profiles focus on building out all of the details to those projects that are selected by them. And things specific to the reinternment site and burial areas, those were potential project ideas that did not get selected as the top five. And also, any projects that don't make it into the top five doesn't mean that they can also be a priority. It just requires that our community, our homesteads champion those projects. And it's very much in the realm of possibility that we can work on those as well.
Do you want to add anything?
Nope, couldn't have said it better than Lily.
Oh, sure.
Oh, sorry. The problem that I have is the land designation. If you don't put these things in the plan, then the land designation is going to be improper. And as far as for these, the plan coming out, the email that we sent since February, I never got adopted. When they sent them to me, I didn't know that this new plan had come out until Saturday. That's the first time I had a chance to look at the new plan. Because I had, I had a testimony last week, but I have to use the one, you know, from before. That's the only plan that I knew about. Nobody told me. And there's other people here in the community that say they never saw the plan either. They're asking, where's the plan? So it's up until the last minute that we're finding out. But since I saw it on this weekend, that's why I'm writing this amended testimony with the list that needs to include. And the first one is going to be those two, three down at the harbor because they say they have leases. It's the boatyard. Yeah, you're right. That is fee simple. You're talking about the other guys. Yeah, you're right. That's them. But these three guys have residential leases. So stuff like that, the Polihi Stream is in the middle of the commercial area, but it's not there. And it's in the wrong location. And like I explained to you about the electric poles that do not go on the highway. And there's a reason why it's not on the highway. And that's because of past electrical problems. So you got to move that in the plan, you know, for you guys to know what you're doing already. It's like, I'm not, even I like the water subsidy back. But that had nothing to do about the regional plan when the department and the commission took it away from us. You're supposed to have done the alternative water.
Okay, Jojo. Thank you. Thank you very much for your comment.
Just one to add, Chair. Land use designations aren't necessarily the focus of our regional plans. Our regional plans really focus on the priorities and issues and opportunities that our homestead communities, our existing homestead communities identify for the department so that we know that when we spend our time and resources in a particular homestead community, that these are the priorities that this homestead wants us to focus on. With regards to Jojo's comments about land use designations, those can be addressed as we continue to update our Hawaii Island Plan. We will be having our first series of outreach meetings for our Hawaii Island Plan in August. Our island plans are the planning documents that address the land use designations for our lands on each island. So when I mean land use designations for the new Commissioners, what I mean is that is the Hawaiian Home Commission's policy on how lands should be used on a particular island. So those can be picked up in the island plan.
Thanks, Andrew. At least we know we're going to get some kind of voice in that land.
Thank you, Jojo.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve this beta regional plan.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, Chair.
Sure.
Can you guys come to Maui? You know, just looking at this and some of the items on here, the five items, is some of the concerns in Leali because of, you know, what happened to Lahaina. But I was fortunate enough to attend a meeting with Kaulia. Here are some of the concerns from the community. So I'd like to get some assistance for Leali to table some of these things so that we can formulate it in a fashion like this that can be presented. If you can get some assistance.
Sure. The commission in its fiscal year 24 budget approved monies for updates. One update was for the island of Maui for the regional plan. And then also in fiscal year 25, the commission also approved additional funding to update regional plans. So we do have one Maui regional plan currently going through the procurement process. Hopefully, that procurement process finishes soon. And then we should be starting the procurement process for regional plan updates on Maui. We can definitely take into consideration the need for Leali, especially given the circumstances that that community has faced over the past year.
Yeah, because some of the needs have changed because of what has happened. So it'd be really good for you guys to come on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, G2, information only. The update for Papukolea. Andrew Choi and Lily.
Aloha, Commissioners. As has been past practice, the Planning Office provides an informational update on the community area that the commission will be having a community meeting in later this evening. This month, it is the Konamoku or the Papukolea community. So with me again, I have Lily, who's also been helping me with Oahu communities.
Aloha, Nui Kako. Lily Makaiila, Planner with the Planning Office. Hello, Michael. Again, this is our planning system. You can see the various tiers. It starts with the general plan. General plan was most recently updated in 2022. This provides a lot of statewide policies and guidelines for all of the tiers that come below it. In the third tier, center left side, you can see regional plans. Regional plans again is us communicating directly with the beneficiaries. And this allows the beneficiaries to be a part of planning the future of their homesteads. Also, in the upper right-hand corner, you can see our island plans. The Oahu Island Plan was last updated in 2014. For this one, I believe the Papukolea Regional Plan was updated in 2020. This map shows DHHL's land holdings in the Konamoku. Specifically, you can see the three homesteads in the Papukolea area, Papukolea, Kalawahine and Keewalo. The other areas are currently not, don't have homesteads. We don't have lessees that are living in those areas. That includes Moiliili. For Kapalama and for Moanalua, those areas are mostly commercial and industrial zoned areas and don't include homesteading uses. Next slide. This shows you each of the areas, Moanalua and Kapalama. It's a total of 20 acres, mostly industrial, commercial use. Primary focus is revenue generation for the trust. In Moiliili, that's the former Bolo Drone site. Two acres in under development, not currently occupied. Next slide. In the Papukolea region, we completed the regional plan and it was adopted by this commission in July of 2020. The vision for Papukolea was a collaborative effort amongst all of the homesteads and attendees at those meetings. Vision is Papukolea, Keewalo and Kalawahine homesteads collectively called the Papukolea region is a native Hawaiian community that thrives on the traditions and values set forth by its founding members and serves as a place of growth and learning for current and future generations. In the map that you see here, it articulates the various land use areas. Most of the yellow area that's there, the kind of clear yellow area without hash marks, that's all homesteads. And then you can see the blue area, that's conservation. Those are kind of the Maoka areas and the areas in between, as well as the floodway that runs right through Kalawahine. And then the purple area in the bottom left, that area is along the side of Po Waina or Punch Bowl. And that area is where some of our community associations and our nonprofit groups from the homestead are working on community use for those areas. Priority projects, we had an interesting prioritization for this one. There were two projects that were combined as they're both cited on the same 14-acre parcel, that purple parcel that I pointed out. So one is a native Hawaiian education and cultural community center. And the next is the Hawaiian Homestead Kupuna Supportive Living Center. We have two different project champions for each of those projects. And I'll give you a more detailed update on how it's moving forward. The third project that was voted was to build a new community center. Papukolea is one of the older homesteads on Oahu. And their community center, you know, there's plenty of homesteaders there and it's really, really heavily utilized. They would love to see some development that might be able to expand, given the constraints that they have as far as not too much land for expansion. But they would like to be able to expand just to meet their community's needs. The fourth is a care home for Kupuna. This one, this idea was a little bit different from the one listed above it. This idea for the care home was that it might be something that could be situated in the community and might provide like daycare for adults or might provide some relief for any of our ohana that have members that might have dementia or Alzheimer's. Someplace that would be a safe place for the Kupuna to have a care home as opposed to a supportive living center, which is the idea for the other project. And finally, a traffic safety program. For those of you who have driven through those homesteads, you know that it's very narrow roads. Folks can tend to drive pretty fast. A lot of cars parked on the side of the road and makes it hard to see. So there's always concerns for traffic safety in that area. Next slide. Oh, let's see.
Any questions or comments? Thank you very much. Okay, D3. Okay, D3, project updates. Kalani Franda.
Aloha again, Commissioners. For the record, Kalani Franda, along with our LDD staff, and I'll have them introduce themselves when it's time for them to share out their updates. So today, we're going to share a little bit about, from slides one through nine, specifically on Papakalea projects. We have some capital improvement projects that have been scheduled, as well as some updates in regards to response that the hard work that the enforcement team has been doing to identify some of these areas that are dilapidated. And so we have a program that we're going to share that we have in place and is scheduled. Lastly, in the Moku, the Konamoku, we're going to share just kind of a very brief update of what's happening in Eisenberg. So with that, I'm going to, next slide. Kehal, if you could introduce yourself and then share the next set of slides in regards to CIP.
Aloha, Kehal Cortero from Land Development Division. I'm going to be talking about Papakalea sewer improvements. This was a prior project, we had phase one that's completed already. We upgraded the sewer so that we can comply with city and county standards. And now, next slide, please. So phase one is on the left, that's been completed. And now we're doing phase two. Phase two has two increments, phase two A and two B. So two A is in red and two B is in blue. Two A has been designed and will be going out to bid soon. Two B is still in design. Next slide. Two A will go out to bid this month. Construction hopefully will start in the late fall. We will be improving 3,500-plus linear feet of pipe, manholes and laterals with pipe bursting and open trench. Approximate cost will be $6 million. Next slide. And that's just another look at the two A. Next slide. Two B, we're still in design. And that estimated start will be in 2026, subject to funding. We will be improving 6,500 linear feet of pipe. And we will have to reroute the flows from homes west of Tantlis Drive and connect to the city sewer system. So that will take coordination with the city because I believe they need to upsize their lines also. And that's going to be a bigger cost, approximately $50 million. With the sewer improvements, there are easements in the lots. And so it will, we will need, we will need cooperation and collaboration with the lessees to be able to, we have to, we will probably have to redefine some of the easements. There are some easements that are obstructed with buildings or various, various things. And so that, that will be the challenge once we do this project. But we worked well with our CM and they work well with the community. They've been there for phase two A, I mean, I'm sorry, phase one. So they know the community well and the area. And they've had success with our first project.
Question. Phase one, when you say phase one completed and a total of $13 million, what exactly was completed?
Oh, they upgraded lines on Anianiku and various areas in Papakalea. I think if you go back to the previous slide, yes.
The red part or the yellow part?
I think they did both.
The red?
Yeah. On, on, on phase one you're talking about, yeah.
So all of that was complete?
Yeah. Thank you.
Aloha, Commissioners.
For the, for the sewer lines that you're talking about, so people don't plant on it as a barrier? That, that, that people don't plant over the pipes? So is that marked anywhere that?
In their lease, there's an easement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Aloha, Commissioners, Michelle Hitzman, Land Development Division. So these lots, we have these seven lots in our inventory. Housing staff did a site visit last week, Tuesday. And we're currently working with contractors to complete these projects. Two of the seven lots are considered renovations. One is going to be a demo rebuild and the remaining three are vacant lots that we will be doing new construction on these lots.
Question.
Sure.
Of those vacant lots, when we went to the meeting in Papakalea, they identified specific homes that they recommended should be taken care of. Are those part of those homes?
I honestly, I'm not sure if that's part of it. These are some of the lots that we got through our enforcement team. But on these lots, there's actually two that would be renovated. So the condition is the Kalawahine. And there's only one actually on this that is a demo. The rest are vacant. So I'm not sure if the others may be in our HSD inventory, but I can follow up on that.
Yeah. We'll try to get the, I'll try to get the address because there was one in particular that was on stilts that, and in front of that, in front, in front of that were two more houses that if that house fell, they were concerned that they would affect the houses that were below them and families lived in that with children. So I'll get the addresses and let you know.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll also follow up. There are some of them that are still under lease agreement. But we do have one that was identified that doesn't have the lease that we are scheduled to move forward with.
It's the 7390 OAK.
So the next two slides are just a quick update on what's happening in the Konamoku. And we have an Eisenberg update. And so four different things that have been taking place since we first heard about this. And one of them is a HUD approval. So they were waiting for ground lease to be approved by HUD. The legal team reviewed it and they were able to get that approved by HUD. There were no legal issues. The legal issues were actually resolved and the Department of Interior approval was not needed. There was also a environmental plan. It was called the Community Environmental Hazard Management Plan. That was also approved by the Department of Health. And so they are scheduled to meet with their tax credit investor this month. And we'll hear an update shortly on that. That's it for what's happening right now in the Konamoku. And once again, for slides one through nine, we will be sharing that tonight at the community meeting.
Sure, next one. Next slide. I'll look at that right now.
So these are just, these are some of the updates that you might have seen before. I just wanted to share a little bit more of what's taken place since then. And that's it.
Any questions on any of this? No?
Thank you.
Okay, we have come to the end of today's agenda. Mahalo hui for participating. Tonight's DHL community meeting starts at 6:30 PM at Stevenson Middle School Cafeteria, 1202 Prospect Street. And tomorrow's agenda will begin at 9:30 AM. We are reset. Thank you, everybody.